Hopefully, everyone is adequately fed and caffeinated and ready for another good day of deep conversations around community goals. One thing that happened as we were adjourning yesterday is Eric Wallace came for public invited to be heard, and we had just adjourned, so I promised him, he had it already written out, so I promised him that I would read you his public invite to be heard. Mary, you're welcome to time me if you'd like, and he asked me to... He asked me to read it in his voice. Because I felt like I needed a foot also, a height, but I also feel like that could be disastrous, so I'll stay on the ground. So I promised him that I would read that for you first thing. So here's Eric's testimony. "Eric Wallace, 339 Pratt Street. As a father, I want three things of my offspring to be able to afford to live in Longmont. Let's provide the housing supply and types of homes needed to meet demand. I am the employer of 60 people, half of whom live out of county. The farther they commute to afford to live, the shorter their tenure, tenure is, and the less viable is my business. I would like as many of my people as so desire to be able to afford to live in Longmont. I am the co-chair of Prosper Longmont. We encourage you to continue to streamline the approval process for a wide variety of homes, make infill developments easier to build, and consider other innovative ways of reducing the costs of forepurchased homes that our local workforce can afford. Building equity in the home-built sustainability and resilience for a residence within a community. As a board member of the Longmont EDP, a group dedicated to Longmont employers and citizens that volunteer their time and invest their own money alongside that of the city to realize the advanced Longmont 2.0, the sister plan to our strategic comp plan and vision Longmont, I encourage you to embrace our approach of collective impact and the realization of the goals laid out in the comp plans. These plans are serious and well-thought-out documents that lay collectively developed vision for our future of our city. Tens of thousands of hours of people time from throughout the community were involved in writing these plans. We all need to stay focused on the strategic plans over an extended period of time in order to realize the vision of the community through your election has tasks with you with realizing. We are your partners in this endeavor. As a cyclist and a climate change believer, I encourage you to continue to invest in bike infrastructure and bikeability, walkability, prioritize denser mixed-use development along primary transit corridors within the areas of redevelopment. The only way that we are going to make bikes and transit a more realistic alternative to cars is to internationally build our city in a way that prioritizes multimodal transit and gives people a convenient option to get from where they are to where they want to be safely and in a reasonable amount of time. Neighborhoods and development and redevelopment areas need to be built with walkability, bikeability, primary needs, proximity, and availability and access to transit in the forefront. The way to developing successful transit systems is to push, is to put enough potential riders and amenities close to the stops of the system to make the system financially viable. Towns our size have done this all over the world. They are more, for, they are far more mixed-use and densely built. We have way too much asphalt. Our current zoning laws in the county are frequently the downstream result of racist and economically discriminatory policies from decades ago. We need to consciously build more diversity into our neighborhoods and cities, mixing housing types, businesses, and gathering spaces that increase social cohesion and foster inclusion and diversity throughout the city. Longmont is a fortunate beneficiary of the excellent resources and infrastructure passed down from our forefathers. We are poised to build our community for the future and ensure future generations harvest the fruits of a collective vision that we can put into effect now." Okay, I will give this to City Clerk Anton. Okay, well with that speech, that's kind of a good way to get started, because today we're going to be talking about the goals that you discussed yesterday, kind of helping to try to work through what does success look like, and then we'll dive a little deeper into some specific topics around some of the environmental roadmaps and a couple of questions, other questions that you all have that we'll dive into. So, oops, that's not the presentation. And that is the plan for today. Just as a reminder, a couple of things. There you go. So you, oh yeah, you have a little, you have a little homework yesterday, and that was to take a look at the city's accomplishments in the areas of influence from the 2020 work plan developed in 2018, and to take a look and see all the great stuff that has happened. And, you know, I sort of hate to negate the opportunity to celebrate those things, but I'm, my guess is that as you read through them yesterday, you probably had a smile on your face recognizing exactly how far we have come over the last four years. So I think that's great. We're going to talk about the vision this morning. Start with the vision conversation, move into some of those goals around the focus areas you discussed yesterday, then we'll start to talk a little bit about the roadmaps, the environmental roadmaps. And then at noon, exciting, we're going to give away a fire truck. So that's going to be fun. The Sister Cities folks will be here and will be able to... I'm not sure whether we're going to wave goodbye. It might just go around the circle, because then they're going to stay for life. But nonetheless, we're still going to give them Fire Engine 8 at noon today to our Sister Cities in Suda this month, followed by a lunch where our Sister Cities folks are going to join us, and then we'll wrap up any elements of the work planning that we haven't done at that point. That's the plan for today. So do you want to get started on the vision?
So where we left off yesterday, as we said, we wanted you all to look at the council vision that you all established in 2020, and really, this is more for you all to discuss amongst each other is, is this still your vision? If it's not your vision, what do you want to change? And just really, this sets the basis for where we're going to go in the next parts of the conversation. So I will turn it over to you all in terms of starting with the vision for people.
Maybe we talk, start with the people vision. Are there pieces that are missing? And I think what I'll do is come out of presentation notes, so that if there's some notes that you guys would like to make.
I was just going to comment that 20 years probably needs to be a year. Because other, otherwise every year it's going to say 20 years.
Yes, and the other one says in 2040. I'm not sure how we ended up that way. I would, I remember.
So I remember in 2000, they had, I was on, I think someone said I had to, a 2020, Vision 2020, and it was designed to have those conversations of what the city is looking like. And then, of course, you know, as we get closer to that, recalibrate. Every year, I think, based on what Harold would say, regardless to the fact that he's only had a year and a half of times that we did have some sort of, some sort of major event happening since it is tenured being here in the city. It's, it's, it is important to always, and this is why this situation of us coming together in a retreat is so important, because we need these opportunities to recalibrate, to reevaluate, and, and talk about what is working, what's not working, and not continuing. It's, it's one of the critical components of our community. But, but I think, you know, that vision statement there is a good one, because it encompasses some of the things that our communities really, that this state moves towards.
It's a very aspirational, there are so many things that can be done. Would you like for me to add in 2040, so that we are kind of consistent with the goal? Let's go ahead and talk about the places. Yeah, Marcia, did you want to add something to the?
Well, I was just thinking that regardless of what year council looks at that, it would still be 20 years from that date. So we could go back and say, change what it is that we want that to be based upon where we are technically. Environmentally, but it would be 20 years from whatever year you want.
Does that not push it out? Doesn't that keep saying the 20 years, so you never get there? If it's always 20 years out, then it's not finite and...
Well, just a thought, and that's why I was thinking that maybe we actually achieve what's in our vision today, so then we're going to change, see what's, what they are looking at for their vision, just a thought.
Excuse me, and then Marcia?
Do visions typically have a year on them? So rather than saying, we strive for Longmont to be the world's greatest city, and Longmont strives to be the world's greatest city.
I would argue that that's more standard for a vision. Because then it's your goals should have time that are timed.
Exactly. Yeah, I just feel like then if all we're doing is just changing the date, it just looks like we're kicking the can down the road.
Exactly.
So, Marcia?
I was about to say almost the same thing, because it is a goal that you never reach. Your demographics change, the standard, expectations for standard of living change. Hopefully, as we said, increasingly, Longmont becomes. And then we're always managed to get better.
I like that. I like what you changed to do the same. Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, because for some people, that vision may be true today. And so the, the concept is to work towards making that true for everyone.
I really think 2020 thing was all about having, you know, a clear vision ahead of time. Because that, that was 20 years was not really to do with a 20-year vision of Longmont so much as it had a nice play on, on words about having a clear vision.
What about places?
Well, before we go off, I just...
Yes, sorry.
In my mind, a visual statement, a vision isn't, isn't description of a future state. So tagging it, a year on it for me is not a problem. It is, because that's whether it's fully realized or not. But I don't buy the idea that you never achieve your vision. You know, it might get clearer and clearer as you go along, but if a vision, and I don't think we ever discussed a criteria definition for a vision, and I'm not suggesting we do that, just my mindset is, what we're doing right now is describing a future state that we intend to achieve, and then we talk about goals and objectives to get us there.
Yes, yep. That's my understanding of a vision is that.
So strive to, for me, isn't, isn't, it's not a vision statement.
Because the vision is that Longmont is this.
Yeah.
Go ahead, take a read one more time and see if you're comfortable.
I like this. Just take the years off and timeframes off.
I have to say, as a city staff person, this is such a beautiful vision, because then it's just, it's such a North Star for us around what we're trying to do in the world.
Well, you know, when we talked about core services, how this applies to core services for us is really important, because even as we look at core services, we're referring to, or I refer to this vision to go, is what we're doing in this core service moving us in the direction of this? And if it's not, then maybe we need to look at, relook at how we're approaching our core service, so that it is a contributing factor to the, to the vision. So you see it's play, you see it play both ways, not only in your goals, but what we do on a daily basis.
To make that feel a little more inclusive, excuse me, would it be helpful to say where all people? Because I'm thinking about putting on that equity and inclusion lens. How does it make sure it feels that way?
As opposed to everyone?
That all, well, all people. Does it feel more inclusive to add that word?
Rather than everyone?
Yes.
Or where people, where all people have access, I'm sorry, or somewhere in there, I just really...
Where all people have access?
Yes.
Is it the will? I got you, right here.
There, where all people have access to each other.
Because it's really about housing for all. I'm trying to, you know, think about how does that appear?
And what I heard Susie say was, do we need the word will? Because we went from, in 20 years, this will happen, to where the state of being is current. Do have, yeah.
Where all people just have access. That's more definitive.
How about places?
Where they do.
Everyone's good with that. I like it.
This, you're going to fist to five?
Good what?
You're going to be fisted to five.
Fist to five?
No, be, love it, or whatever in between.
Good one, okay.
I think places need to, I think those are specifics.
We do have some more specific things in the places section, that's for sure.
And to Susie's point, maybe is that Longmont has a development?
Well, we're not there yet.
Has developed?
Yeah, has developed, uh-huh.
Main Street from Hyde to 66.
That a ball.
Will has one.
Thank you. Now to Main Street from Hyde to 66. I want something in there about transportation. We're recording inspections.
Don't pull 15 minutes in. What? There's a, there's a group of people who think that this is an authoritarian plot, the 15-minute city.
Oh, to be able to get across the city in 15 minutes.
So just don't use that key word.
I can get across the city, that's my...
The thing about getting across is about creating neighborhoods that are walkable by road. Right? You're never more than 15 minutes from walking from whatever you need to live your life. That's the, that's the, you haven't been reading those...
I have not seen any of that. Yes, okay.
Is it sort of accessibility in a sense? Does that work in a lot of things, but?
What I heard, that's what Dr. Cog is that we were talking about transit, either regional or that's a 15-minute, so it's a call, 15 minutes you really have to wait for transit. That's the way Dr. Cog wrote it.
Gotcha.
So you're not sitting at a bus stop for a half an hour.
Does it make sense to add transportation here at the beginning? And Mary, tell me a little bit more about what you're thinking, what perspective you have. What is your vision in that arena that you did?
My vision is that we have, I'm trying to get that into the mindset of everybody, that transportation, as we are building our cities, we need to have that a goal in places that we have transportation for everybody. I don't know how to say it.
I think it would fit better around the quality of life sentence.
Oh, you do?
Well, transportation, like reliable.
Yes.
Transportation system or something along, or robust transportation. I, because I think that's more in the quality of life section of the places. That's where it would fit in, as, as I read it.
The, the way that you end defines it is, is that you are within 15 minutes, even though we shouldn't say 15 minutes.
Close proximity?
Access, yeah, access or proximity to all of life's activities without the requirement that you own a personal vehicle.
Walkable proximity, something, yeah.
I think that may be too narrow when you, when you take that, because when you look at a transportation system that supports that, you know, when we think about the first main transit center, which really is the hub and Kaufman, that is, I think if you just focus on that, it sort of is diving down a level, and how do you stay up high to?
Can we say a transportation system that supports our quality of life? Does that make sense? Transportation options instead of system, because system is not necessarily prescriptive. That's pres, that's prescriptive, that's right.
What about multi?
Multimodal, very.
I think mobility is a better word, because that really addresses people at all stages.
That's right.
Opportunity for access as opposed to just transportation.
And multimodal also is prescriptive in its way.
Where are the takeout?
Takeout transportation, that's not mobility options.
Yeah, mobility by itself is not, yeah, mobility options.
Or alternative. I'm not sure that you even need to access these two, because the idea is that you have access. Longmont's quality of life includes mobility options and sustains.
Yep, yeah, that sounds like a relative one.
And, yes, and sustains. Yeah. Enjoy, 100%.
Of course, sustainable mobility options and renewable, you know, weight.
Enjoy, the renewable energy, because we don't, aren't so...
Is it your fast, original cost?
Yeah. And everything, air clean and all that.
You know, and as I think about our conversation on Vision Zero, where we're going, maybe it's Longmont's quality of life includes mobility options.
Safe.
Safe mobility options that, not necessarily balanced, because Vision Zero is putting pedestrians and bicyclists at a higher priority than cars, but bringing some link in junior, first bill can help with how we can say, we're able safe mobility options that prioritizes pedestrians, bicyclists.
That can be a different goal piece.
Yeah, I'm just trying.
The point is to have the mobility options, right? Okay, so help me with the climate piece of it. So Longmont's quality of life includes safe mobility options and enjoys 100% renewable power. There's so much more to the climate, climate sustainability conversation, so, but the end of this sentence doesn't catch it, so...
Why is it respecting as opposed to addressing?
That's what I'm looking for, help me.
Because, yeah, you respect the natural environment here, but you pre, address climate, if that makes sense.
Or you say something along those lines, and that's something that's initiatives or, kind of a different place to look at it.
Too much. Maybe too much. There you go. That sounds good.
Because it continues, it continually shifting.
But it's not what you see in the day. So you think that covers environmental as well?
Okay.
So are there taglines?
What are the?
Tagline, there are a lot of words in.
Words in there.
Yes, a tagline for both of them, not right now, but...
You know, certainly when I'm lobbying on your behalf, oftentimes, you know, the, the big topics that I'm talking about for folks, you know, that this council is very focused on transportation, they're very focused on, you know, environmental issues, but sustainability and the whole piece of it, right? So sustainability has three pieces to it. There's environmental, there's social, and then there's economic. And it's the balance of those things that makes it what it is as opposed to just energy. But I think it was important to you all to put that renewable energy goal right in the vision, because that was such a big speaking thing that changed the whole region after.
Yes. I, I, I don't want to upset this apple cart, because I'm really happy with what we've got here, but economic sustainability is not mentioned, and it's something we have to defend every day, because a lot of people, when they don't like something that the city is doing, we're doing it for economic sustainability, and that's not in their mental calculations. So as we message, I'd like to make sure that, that economic sustainability is, it's core. It's part of the core, and nobody realizes that.
Well, that's what it takes for all of us.
Yes.
So can you put, like, the last little paragraph there, Longmont's quality of life and economic stability includes energy options? Does that make sense?
I like economic stability.
Yeah, stability.
Stability or vitality?
Vitality, yeah.
Vitality is a lot better.
Yeah, that's a better word.
And should that be the first sentence that's a little more global, and then you talk more specifically about the West Virginia?
Oh, that's a good idea, because we're starting out with.
Yeah, it's very specific, so maybe we need to talk about, yeah.
Yes.
It's really more, the last sentence is more aspirational and the first sentence is more specific, so...
Yeah, you just need a space.
There you go.
About there. There you go.
I have a question. Longmont has the development Main Street. In my mind, I don't know what that really means, develop. I mean, I came up with the word vibrant, inviting, living, community corridor. The word develop, when I go down, it's just develop on both sides.
I think that's the shift from we'll do this to what we want to see in the world, David, I think that's a great catch. So I hope we change that to say, Longmont has a vibrant Main Street from Hyde to 66, a river corridor that stretches from Sugar Mill to Fairgrounds.
We have vibrant either twice.
Yeah, and that feels like it's sort of a dangling modifier over here. I don't know what that's really talking about, as a vibrant economic residential. What I'm saying, if you read it, it's not super clear, though.
But it's ec, it's vibrant economic residential cultural entertainment epicenter.
But it, it should be a river corridor as an economic blah 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 that stretches. I think it's, the modifier's in the wrong place, is my opinion.
Well, in fact, it reads better without the word at all, than have it for Main Street.
Yes. Yeah, that was good. How are we doing?
So stuff that is vulnerable, did you?
Yeah, something that is.
Longmont's quality of life, that kind of effect, with safe mobility options and enjoys 100% renewable power while addressing the expenses.
Transition from to Fairgrounds, asking about like...
Main Street from Hyde to 66, and a river corridor that stretches from Sugar Mill to Fairgrounds. That is, does that make sense?
That form?
An economic residential, cultural, and entertainment epicenter. And I don't know that we need this modifier here either. Sustainable.
We need economic, in the Sugar Mill part, we need to say economic again, since it's up at the top.
No, because you've already said that you're going to include that in everything you're looking at. It's a residential, cultural, and entertainment epicenter. I love that, by the way. It's very easy to, you know, attach to that as a city staff talking about this epicenter.
I guess, I guess I'm wondering, why do we have, have to remind people that it's Longmont the second time in that vision statement? Longmont's quality of life, and we say again, Longmont has a, like...
We just said we.
Yeah.
We have.
We has.
We has.
We has.
We has a vibrant Main Street.
Or there, yeah.
I think we just should change it and say y'all.
Now you're talking.
West Virginia, she doesn't have a problem with that.
Y'all.
Starting surrounded, actually, right here. I'd also use the terms keynotes as opposed to all of Main Street, all of the Riker, all of Fairgrounds. Like, maybe there's a way to, to be specific about, you know, every stretch of Main Street is meant to be the same, but how do you, you know, what the keynotes are, the key to transportation, disorders, and all the things people want in a restaurant.
Could you use the word will?
I still want to keep Main Street, just say a vibrant Main, a vibrant Main Street, and a river corridor, so you're going to have vibrant river corridor and Main Street. But that's mostly.
If there's a necessary, does any of the boundaries specific, Hyde Road to 66?
Yeah, the idea is that, all is that east and west.
So Marcia just came up and asked, whether Fairgrounds is the end, or is it further than that? Is it all the way to Airport Road? That's not where the scheme plan goes, but...
Well, all the way to Airport may not be, uh, developable.
Developable. Yes. So I'm sorry, I got a little lost in there. What, what are the changes would you like to see?
I was just wondering if it was necessary to delineate the boundaries.
Oh, I see.
Because then you're not talking about from Sugar Mill to Fairgrounds to Sugar Mill to Airport. You're saying the river corridor, or you're just saying Main Street instead of needing Hyde Road to 66.
And the river corridor currently is west of...
That's right, the river corridor goes, goes all the way to Lions.
We have to start from, like I said. That's sort of going in some new ways.
Well, maybe you could say our river corridor. I'm losing my focus with them, do you just say? Let me, let me take out those qualifiers and see what you think. Let me take out the two qualifiers and then let's see.
Now you get rid of the commas, yeah.
And and maybe if there is, that's what you were saying about.
Right, rather than the the visions.
Or we are.
Yeah. And then I'm just looking at the bullets from the previous initiatives, I just want to throw out a couple of words that are also referenced, and that was um about bringing together private industry, local government, nonprofits, institutions, blah blah blah, for the best prepared workforce in the Western US. So that was part of places, I don't know if that's the thing, and then of course references to the Conference and Performance Center. So just a couple of things that aren't included in that that were sub bullets to places.
The Performance Center is the entertainment epicenter.
Oh, sorry.
This Sandy still doesn't quite read well. It says the vibrant Main Street and a river corridor that is residential, it's sort of like describing Main Street River Corridor as the residential cultural epicenter.
And I think our environmental. I'm sorry, may I say heading? I think the environmental is not going to like this, it's all the river corridor and it's a residential cultural. Because they're going to say you're going to build all of this on the river corridor, that's the way it's written.
Well, essentially, so have before.
And and we have these protections that are respecting the natural environment, you know, with our coach, can't get close enough to the river to make a mess already.
Well, and maybe the place qualifiers help us with that, maybe let me drop a back end and see what you think, because the other piece of it is that you're saying this is the piece we're focused on and not every bit of river, right? It is this plan that we're referring to, so let me pull that back in here. Maybe that's what helps. Is because you're saying this is the focus, this place is the focus.
Yeah, you know, you can take out Hyde Hill Highway to sixty-six, that they don't have to be perfectly semmetrical.
True.
Main Street is Main Street.
So, um, just a thought, uh, that we are talking about a specific part in our places going to make some kind of a statement about connecting neighborhoods to these places and to the corridors, um, because, or is this?
Is that the idea of the ability options?
Well, that it's a question, um, does this belong in places or is there another part? Mainly because isn't this one envisioned, Longmont is telling us that we need to connect? Or am I taking it too far, too deep?
My personal opinion is that we don't want to get too prescriptive in this, you just need a hook to hang everything on. And then the the other things, like the nature of the transit, can go into the work items that, um, you know, that that flesh it out and and make it buildable as opposed to ask for. I I love this, I think it's it's better than the previous one, but doesn't lose anything.
Adds, certainly adds some pieces. We could add the connection neighborhoods if we wanted to. Because we have, you know, like river corridors or someplace, we can just put, um, community corridors, connecting major corridors, I don't know. Connect our community is good, right where you put it.
Oh, I just told you. She just did it. Just her and Harold later.
Dear Joe, you could say this, oh, that'd be Sandy writing that down. Do you want it?
I think that, I think, yeah, because it connects our economic development corridor or business areas and our Main Street and our neighborhoods. And I think if you just said residence, residence, then it. Because I think that, because I think that goes back when we looked at the transportation piece and we kind of anchor on First and Main, Stockton Street, working on rail. Looking at other transportation options that really is about connecting other communities as well.
It doesn't sound right here, though, when you have and enjoys, um, what would be better is there's a vibrant Main Street and a river corridor that connects our community to.
Or while.
While presenting or.
While enjoying.
I don't know if options enjoy.
Or maybe community period, we will enjoy.
Or we enjoy.
Or a hundred percent renewable.
They are definitely different, I mean, those are definitely different.
Exactly, they're different things. Or it could say something like a hundred percent renewable energy will power, blah, you know, the community with constant consideration of climate change or something, I mean, there's always.
I know that's a consideration, I mean, the plan is reactive. I mean, I get what you're saying dramatically.
We're trying to hurt that.
Or how about of of climate change over time connecting our community to a vibrant Main Street and River Corridor? Is that is too wordy or? So Longmont's quality of life and economic vitality includes safe mobility options that connect our community. We enjoy a hundred percent renewable power while addressing the effects of climate change over time. There is a vibrant Main Street and a river corridor that stretches from Sugar Mill to Fairgrounds, it is residential cultural and entertainment epicenter, sustainable and respects the natural environment.
Which is?
Which is sustainable?
Yeah, that needs a verb.
Or, yeah. And then Valerie pointed out, we don't need to say our vision is because it says we're planning this division.
Sorry, I wasn't very, so I get obnoxious, I appreciate it.
I feel it. Yep.
I love it.
Sounds good.
One question, very glass, very, uh, natural environment and is there a difference between natural environment, you know, like rivers and all that and wildlife?
I think wildlife.
I can't.
We can't control the air, this we have some ability to make happen. We can't, we have no, we have no control.
Although we do have control over controlling them in the sense that, um, if we create barriers to migration, that's controlling them. And respecting the natural environment means we don't create those.
Oh, yes.
I think, for me, that's getting into operation.
Well, no, I don't want to say that, I'm just saying natural environment is enough.
I do think it includes. To your question, John, I think that's. All right, I can save.
I like it.
Yeah, I like it. Good work.
So just to kind of give you a sense, the work that you all did in twenty twenty when you put this together, for those of you who were here, if you remember, I think it took us a couple of hours.
That was actually two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eight, yeah.
We modified, in two thousand twenty, we added.
Couple words.
And the people, we added the reference to entire life for adults.
We also added a hundred percent renewable energy at that point.
But in eighteen, if you remember, it took us a long time to kind of get to this, and and I think now we're starting to see how we can just, we're just going to tweak this as we're moving forward. That was really, it was really neat for me to watch you all do this.
Maybe it's just me that can, just to keep breath, that was awesome.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is something that we should remember, like when we go, people ask me, but, you know, what's Longmont? You know, where's Longmont and everything, and then this this is something that is that elevator should be stood, you can kind of, it's great.
You could print those business cards from back.
Oh, yeah.
And everybody, you know.
Like like those little constitutions.
I will tell you, you know, we just brought in, uh, DeMoto Communication Company to kind of help us with our strategic communications plan for sustainability. When they read all the information, everything that Longmont is doing, all the different awards and all these things, they're both consultants, they're like, maybe we should be, and then.
High speed internet.
Both consultants were like, maybe we should be doing operations to Longmont. Yes, yes, we think, yes, come on.
So we can put the new one up on the website like right away, right?
Yes.
We need to pass through.
Yes, I will, uh, I will hit save and at the break, I'll send it to Mark, I will leave it up on the website right away. Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Harold to talk a little bit about vision and goals, and Valerie's going to talk as well.
Well, I mean, I talked about this yesterday, so why are we setting these goals? It's really taking that, looking at the vision and working on short term motivation, where we're all rowing in the same direction. I think that was the thing that I talked to you all yesterday about what my needs were, what we needed as a balancing core operation, is really being in lockstep with each other in terms of are we rowing in the same direction? Now, that may mean at times that we think here's where we're going, but the world changes around us and you have to adjust, doesn't mean we're going to go perpendicular, it means we're going to go at a diagonal because we have to make adjustments.
Navigation.
Pardon?
All navigation.
It's navigation, yeah, it's it's really, uh, and that's actually a good word, you know, we're navigating the, uh, you know, it's kind of riffing on what I said yesterday, the tumultuous waters that we're all experiencing and I think will continue. It also lets us get faster and we can build the accountability. And, uh, when we have the focus, we can move faster and when we manage what's on us, then it lets us really get these things hard and fast where we can, uh, next year hopefully say, here's everything that we did because of the focus.
So if the metaphor rather than rowing was saying, like, we're a crew, even great navigators can make headway, or okay, stay on course and headwinds, right?
Right.
In adapting.
Johnny's a rower, she.
So Harold's the cuck, so he's a sweet boat, right, so he's pulling the cords.
So, um, after about an hour of me presenting to you all yesterday, talking about the different challenges we have, you know, we we ended with this slide. And once again, I'm going to kind of go back a little bit because we have more people in the room today. Uh, when we said water, my operational goals, unyielding focus on our core services, addressing staffing challenges in labor market, and making data-driven decisions and project management, I gave you some, I gave you three. Uh, it's also having, you know, creating financial stability and sustainability for the organization, being as efficient and effective as we possibly can, but I didn't want to take up too much room in this. Uh, and then we talked about, based on what you all had already put in this, what were my operational goals last year? What I see in terms of the operational, or, you know, so how do you see the future? We said housing, uh, which included the Housing Authority, because we can't untangle that from here, and we can't untangle that from the organization because many of the same people are here saying work. Affordable attainable housing, um, we talked about equity and sustainability and climate action. Uh, obviously, you see steam downtown area, Sugar Mill, uh, that is tying into your vision that you just talked about. We could probably add Main Street onto that too, based on what, uh, we're working on Kimberly, uh, transportation and then early childhood. As I'm thinking about this, you all said, let's work off of this today so we can really define what that's going to look like and how we're going to move through it. Um, and I was, as I was listening to the conversations, I'll let's get back to this, I have a piece. I think one of the things that we often struggle with, uh, as staff as we're moving through these topics is which one of these variables is actually the top priority for us? Uh, and you heard, you kind of heard me talk about that when we discussed housing, to say, what is our North Star? And what is going to be the primary, uh, if we rank these in ranked order? What is number one? Because there are a lot of times where these will start competing against each other from tie, from a tie perspective, uh, from a financial perspective, and we have to make choices. Mark?
I was about to say we can make choices. I think what we have is two priorities, operational core services and everything else, which is sustainable growth. So rather than, um, saying we're going to drop early childhood, uh, or drop transportation, what we're going, we we need to, um, keep them moving in lockstep, even if it means we have to slow everything down because none of them work without the other one.
And and I, that's a good point. I think what what, you know, if you take the housing conversation, you know, yesterday I said, who's all working on housing? Even those that didn't raise their hand, virtually everybody's touching it. So I guess my question is, if I get into a point where I have a situation from a capacity standpoint, financial standpoint, where I I have a decision to make operationally, is it housing or is it steam? The more clear I am in terms of your rank priorities, the easier it is for me to make those operational decisions real time, because that happens.
I disagree with what Mark just said about lockstep and they're all the same. I, for me, um, I don't I don't know how, if if we solve the housing problem without the childcare issue, I mean, the whole question of what's a living wage and economic, you know, viability in Longmont, we've just, we've lost the second part of the major variable, right? Those things I think have to go together, and I think those things are more immediate. Now, we've got to continue addressing climate over the long run, we're going to have a lot of control over transportation, I think. We have way more, a bit of control over a lot of, more control over some of these variables than others, and some are more urgent or, I don't know, uh, uh, viable to a turn, to affect in the short term than others in terms of the long run. I I I want to understate the importance of of either transportation or the environment, but we have way more opportunity to make an impact on the other two in the short run than transportation or climate change.
I I think that it's a matter of how things are addressed. Um, I I don't think that what Tim said actually contradicted what I said. You may think so, Tim, but, um, the thing is that if you, if you don't provide all all of the needs in the human basket, then something's going to break. And I think it's more a matter of approach. I I have the strongest memory of the first piece of actual operational, um, instruction that I got from you. The first thing you ever taught me, Harold Dominguez, was about public-private partnerships. So some of these things, uh, are things that can only be done by the city, the operations, you know, and I mean, even now, because of Tabor, we've adapted to a model where infrastructure is inherently a public-private partnership. And so, um, you know, we know it works, we know that in some ways it's the only way we have to make forward progress. So what we need to understand, need to learn better is how we, uh, address some of these essential needs by bringing in the private as opposed to, um, things that have to actually be run up down um, like Nextlight and Longmont Power and, you know, the water treatment systems and stuff that that have to work operationally because they're core. But all the other stuff can can be a partnership.
I think it can, I think it's a it's a different level of work and where you're working. I think it's, it's a different level of work and where the work sits and what you have to do. So on, on developing public-private partnerships, the front-end work is exhaustive in what you have to do. So it takes a lot of bandwidth on the front end. Where it saves you on the bandwidth is on the back end. But putting those together takes a lot of time. So I can use the analogy of the, on the housing work that we're doing. The work that we've done on Christman and on Xenia and on Hover, those are public-private partnerships. Of which we're not putting in a little bit of money, but not a lot. The time it's required to develop those is in the hundreds of hours. In terms of building the financial package, understanding the capital stack, everything that you talked to you about. And so what I was trying to get at is, the more I can understand how you all, we're seeing these lined up. I'm not saying we stop it. I think that, that wasn't there. I'm not saying we stop it, but when we have three housing, public-private partnerships or something that we're working on. And somebody comes in, because we see this, you all hear it all the time. This is in your vision, this is in your work plan, you need to do this. But we're doing a lot of things in your vision and your work plan. And it, it would help me to work with everyone is if I understood at, at the thirty thousand, what's your priority on this? So that as we're making real-time decisions and we have three housing projects going. Someone comes in and says, oh, we wanna do this at the Sugar Mill. You know, I can say, I get it and we can do this, but it's gonna go slow because I need to go fast on these things. And understanding that rank order helps me make those base decisions that you referenced.
I think we'd all line out slightly different rankings.
And that's why I wanted to have this conversation here, because that's where we're struggling. Is the different rankings on the individual. And I need a whole list of rankings from the council. So that I know that I'm really addressing in order, when there's competing issues. There are times when we may not ever. But in those, at those times when they compete, what is your order?
Harold, you're talking about these five, right? Between housing, equity, sustainability, climate change, steam, transportation, early childhood.
A lot of times we can fix, sorry, a lot of times we can figure it out and we're moving. I mean, you saw the downtown board where, you know, we had folks working, but this was really a pinch for us times. You know, there, there are opportunities that come around that we can't not take because they're tied up. Costco is a good example of that. We knew what we were gonna lose and we knew what we were gonna gain. And we're really fighting against the loss recognition. Had we not have taken that and run with it at that point in time, it's not like that opportunity will exist in the future. It's, it's gone. So there's that piece of the decision-making process of which we talked about with you all real time. There are other times where we just get into these pinches of, do we get this housing project done? Or do we spend time working on this? And, and understanding as a body where you all sit really helps this team inform our decisions in terms of A or B, when we're pinched from a capacity standpoint.
I'm concerned with having the word equity appear on only one of these line items. Especially not in the housing line item. So, you know, all of the bullets under housing are directly related to quality of life equity. And yes, you know, climate action is preservation of equity. Because the worse our, worse our environment is, the less equity we have. Because the people who don't have the agency to escape will sit in it. But, you know, all of it is about equity. Childhood action is about equity because I bought whatever the school system didn't provide for my child. But some people can't do that.
Yeah, you, you raise a good point. Both equity and I mentioned earlier, sustainability are woven through everything that we do. So maybe this one really is more specific on a hundred percent, or should you go on climate change? Because the equity and sustainability should be...
And, and you could actually, you could actually move that up into operational.
Wouldn't wanna miss it, yes.
You could move that into operational, but here's the difference. When, when we talk about equity and sustainability, it is something we're working on operationally. But we talk about it in terms of building it in, into the DNA of the organization.
Yes.
So that it becomes part of everything that we do. That's my operational goal. What we're talking about is council in terms of equity and sustainability, in terms of your council goal. Because mine is inward-facing. If you put equity and sustainability into it, that's a different perspective. You're also saying, yes, inward, but also outward-facing in terms of how we engage in the community. And so there's a difference in terms of where that sits. Because if it's my operational goal, I can go to the organization and say, here's my goal, here's what we need to do. I can't necessarily go to the community and say, here's my operational goal, because I'm not the policymaker. You all are the policymakers.
So I'm not sure what you mean by inward and outward. I mean, running this, you know, thousand-person operation as, as an equitable and sustainable organization is one thing. But that's very micro. There are other operational things.
Internal.
Yeah, that's internal.
Yeah, that's internal, which shouldn't be a council goal at all, right? But we should be able to assume it. But, but the, um, equity, operational equity is stuff like the horizontal infrastructure is older and crumbier and less adequate to the future in the worst neighborhoods, you know, less, least economic viable neighborhoods that we have. And that is huge inequity because people will be left behind.
Should that be part of a vision statement or something that is an overall statement right there? I think you have it.
You agree with Harold.
It is a vision.
Harold.
I don't think we need to repeat that in everything that we address.
It's how we prioritize.
Does it work okay like this? If what we're saying is equity and sustainability is not operational as we, as we implement?
That's why I asked what that meant.
Yeah. And I think it, for me, and I'm just gonna tell you for me, and I know there's some others that have their hand up. For me, even internally, when I get into this, what, what I can anchor on when I talk about equity and sustainability is not only is it my goal, it's the council's goal. Because you do get pushback on this. And so I think not having that as part of your goals. Where if you just push it in the operational piece, it does create challenges. It also creates challenges when we're talking to the community. And they go, well, you know, why aren't you doing this? And so I don't wanna leave, even if we ask for it in the operational piece. But we just agree that, that is both a city council goal and an operational goal. Because we do know when we talk about equity, there are two pieces to this. Carmen and I talk about this all the time. I can work the internal side of it and really bring the training and everything that we need. But there is going to be a point where we have to start working the external side of it with the community. And I, if I don't have that policy direction as part of this, then that's gonna, you know, be a bit of a rub-down, right?
Harold, do you agree that that's not necessarily an item to be prioritized?
Correct.
It is something that we need affirmation that that's the city's.
Yes.
Needs to be suffused in everything that happens.
It's not a rankable one.
It's not a rankable one, but I just need to know you all are on board and this is also your goal as well as my goal. That way, when we hit those tension points, you know, it's that classic phrase, you know? When you go right behind you and then you turn around, it's like, whoa. And that's part of why I wanted to dig into this. Because I think we all know where we are in what we're seeing nationally in these conversations. We're seeing it in our community. And I don't wanna outrun in your headlines if that's not something you want.
Let's give Harold a thumbs up that we, that we want that equity and sustainability throughout.
Yeah, this is, this is two thumbs up. I, I think none of those ones should be even without the isolation.
It shouldn't be done in isolation. It should be embedded in all of our... That's what, that's what makes it tough, right? It's not really rankable. It should be implemented throughout all of the work that we do.
And it varies depending on what the, what the project is or what issue is.
Right.
But in fact, it is.
And so I know there were some other hands raised back here, so on and...
How my computer's about to die. I'm running my marriage now.
Keep talking, keep talking.
I should do that.
Okay, so for me, I totally, I mean, I felt from the beginning that equity should, is embedded in everything. And that's the lens we're looking through, okay? I, I mean, that's what I thought was happening anyway. As far as prioritizing, housing, you know, being a single mom, my kids are, are older now. Thank goodness I don't have to deal with what younger families have to deal with. With affordable housing and affordable childcare. I feel like that's equal. Coming from the perspective of a single parent, you know? You have to have affordable housing and you also have to have affordable childcare as well. To me, they're on an equal point. Like, we should be busting tail to try to make sure we accommodate our residents with that. I don't know if, I think that's, for me, that's priority. I don't know if that's something we can say, we can have them equal like that. But at least for the first priority, for me, I think we should go one, you know, first, second, third. However you wanna do it, I'm just going with what I feel is the goal. We should work on, that's priority for me. Just so that we can get started on it. Cause I know we're kinda going elsewhere, so we can, I know you have other stuff for us to do. If we can have that discussion, I would love to hear what my other council members would like to say on that.
Did you rank the others? If you said housing and childcare are equal?
Yeah. Transportation for sure, because that's another thing. Transportation and of course, a hundred percent. All of that, like Marcia said, kind of, it all comes together, but I'm not gonna prioritize. So steam, the Sugar Mill is on the box for me. Because we're looking at essentials. If, i- i- if you don't have, okay, so if I'm working and I need a place to stay that's affordable and the only place I can, you know, if I'm working, I can't live where I work. And childcare is too expensive. But then my city is, is really encouraging me not to drive a car. But then the bus system don't go everywhere I work. We have a problem. So how do we, we need to address all those issues together. So those are my priorities.
So, thanks Shakira. You, you said much of what I was wanting to. I don't know how we can address housing, which I think is the priority, without addressing transportation. When we talk about LHA and building residents, residents and support people who either can't drive or can't afford to drive. Then we have to address transportation. When we're talking about building an urban society and we do not address transportation at the same time. Then I think we are not building a holistic city. So I, I disagree that this is out of our control. I think that's a message that we have been given by other entities, by, by states and counties that the rural cities cannot control because we belong in a district. So some of these things I think we can work, are being worked on in parallel. Not necessarily with the cities doing everything, for example, childcare. It's been worked, it's being worked on in parallel with, and we'll see where it goes, with asking for an early childhood district. It may not be something that the city has to put time into right now. But we need to support the effort that in parallel that is being worked on. The same thing might be, so I think transportation needs to be moved up. Because we can't, again, I, I know I'm beating the drum, but we can't say it's out of our control. We have to make sure that everybody in this county knows that we are going to take control over our city transportation and make it work so that the way we are building our city works. And that is being worked on right now and is being worked on in parallel. So we just, we just need to make sure that we are on board that if we're gonna build this way, we need to make sure that we can travel this way. The other things that I, I think steam basically is kind of out of the city council's control. That should be up to the staff on where that is prioritized. If you have the time to work on it, then do it. But if you don't, these other things that need to be prioritized. So for me, it's housing front and center along with transportation and support the early childhood. Parallel path that is trying to go on.
Would it be helpful, you know, when we talk, when I said about what we have control of that, that the mindset about those aspects of transportation that are more like RTV related?
But we do have a lot of input.
I, I get it, I'm talking about it far more broadly. So it would be helpful for me to kind of tease out which parts of a transportation solution we control and, and that, you know, the factoring, the budgeting are actionable for us. Those things on which we don't have a lot of control. But, so I just want to acknowledge, I, I, I get there are things.
Okay, well, but, but I think Joan is right, the picture is changing there. What, what Adam's trying to make is, is, is that there are, there are things that we can let go of by changing the control points and things that we can't. So for example, you prioritize early childhood by, by backing the special district. Because we already don't do a huge amount of actually doing the work. You know, we fund and we engage with some independent agencies that provide oversight. If Christina is that kind of a correct model. You know, we have organizations like Rida that are not city operations, but keep us informed of where the pain points are. And that is a whole different thing than something like Netslight where we put in the infrastructure and we run it and we enhance it and we do all of it. So maybe before we prioritize, we should be able, we, we should put these things in two columns. You know, honestly, steam is the same way. We enable those things to happen, but then somebody else is gonna actually do it.
But there's a lot of, a problem with, on developments like that, with staff and city board.
Yes, it's true.
And I guess that was my point. If you feel you don't have a bandwidth to do that, for me, that has to go down a little bit.
I just had a thought about, when you say equity and sustainability throughout, that's a right under, as a major point under operational. Shouldn't housing and all these kind of shift to the right? Because they're all going to fall under, under that? Because that's the concept, is that what you wanted?
And, and what I'm saying by equity and sustainability throughout is really, the analogy I use is the organization is embedded in the heat. I mean, everything we do. It's a lens, so the analogy I use when I'm talking to the organization, looking to Carmen, we do a lot of things together. The analogy I use in the organization, it's like if you're, have you ever seen National Treasure? So the Benjamin Franklin glasses where you have the different lenses? It's where you always have the lens of equity and sustainability over your glasses. So no matter what we're doing.
It's practice.
First and front and center DNA becomes practice, it becomes automatic in what we do. It's first and front center DNA becomes practice, it becomes automatic in what we do. Just like it's automatic for efficiencies and effectiveness, and that's what everybody tends to focus on. This is really creating an automatic response of how is this addressing equity? How is this addressing sustainability?
So that seems to me that this you've got very top and everything should shift to the right, even under the operational. Based on what you just said, seems that that would be a logical, uh, thing, that everything is given the operational side. Then it should be, uh, should fall underneath that sustainability based on, on that type of thing.
Harold, to that point though, um, because we're talking about goals, if we think about equity, sustainability, is there a way that each of us, operational owners, should come back and say, here are our goals, here's what we're going to implement? Because I think, yeah, we need to be very specific about it.
Well, you, you all did, you know, the work we just kind of went there, why didn't you do it? This is really a big help to me, because then I'm going back, we're doing this. We want equity, we want equity and sustainability goals, but I can now look at these folks and go, all right, they're doing it, but here's where we're going, it's embedded in everything. And when I get pushback, because I do get pushbacks, I can go, it's not only my goal, as, as the, the city manager, it's the council's goal, and my job is to make sure your goals are addressed. And, and that gives me, that helps me when I'm having these conversations. I'm going to kind of help you a little bit, Erin, um.
I have a thought, I guess, is that, I don't know if I rank them by importance, because they're all very important, right? I break them based on how much can we affect versus, uh, the need to work with private partner. Um, for instance, the steam downtown, that's heavily reliant on downtown partnerships and seem to be more, the flexibility to address an opportunity when one comes along, right? Versus housing, where now obviously, LHA, uh, is much more, uh, under the purview of the commission, uh, which is more internalized in the city. Um, I think as, as we've talked about early childhood, there's opportunities, but again, that's a lot of partnerships that we have to control. So with transportation, I think that there are opportunities to bring, um, things within, internal to the organization in the sense that some of the most connected municipalities out there are part of multiple authorities to, to get the holistic system to work. Um, so they'll be a part of a regional district like we are, but then they'll also have the certain things that are operated at a more municipal level or interesting travel. And so I think there are opportunities for us, it's going to, you know, we're not going to be able to provide those, those kinds of services for free, obviously, there will have to be something. Unlike our current fare buyout that we're doing with RTB, I think we'll have to go back to charge affairs for these things. But, you know, that, I think if they're, the opportunity level there to have internal control over a significant section of, of our safe mobility options, could, could prioritize that up depending on council direction, I suppose. Um, so that's kind of, I would rank them based on how much control we have over them.
Or how much control we must take.
Or must take.
Yeah, because, uh, you know, the privatization, I mean, Phil has brought in, has located some incredibly innovative private providers that we could partner with under, um, RTB's new rules that we really haven't seen yet, but you guys are already on it. Um, so, uh, you know, we can make that easier, require less oversight by the city versus, um, you know, the wastewater system, ain't nobody going to do that for us. We have to use a stick to get the builders to start it off right, you know? Um, so those things are always going to be really labor intensive for the city. Um, even when we try to push it out onto the land, it doesn't hardly work. So, um, I, I think that, yeah, Erin and I are on the same page on that, and that we should, we should rank these things into columns versus about labor intensity and the requirements for control versus our ability to let go.
I see Harold waiting columns, I was thinking.
That's where I'm going to go.
Yeah.
And you're, you're getting at some of it, Suzie, any ideas?
I know, now that I'm rethinking, because, you know, because I was looking at priorities, Erin had a good point about, um, you know, so like I'm thinking about steam downtown, I mean, that is heavily dependent on, like, you're not actively going out there and seeing this group alone, it's really that building that partnership, so that's, that's kind of dependent. You know, my priorities are housing, childcare, you know, and then, you know, but it is, it's hard to rank because they're also very important. And depend upon each other.
So maybe if you think about it this way, because we do move these things, all at the same time. If, if one of these came against another and I go to you all and say, we're max, which one do you want me to focus on? Which one would you want me to focus on?
I think it would depend for me upon how much traction we made in each area, the one that is taking longer. Whatever you can accomplish fastest in whatever is, you know, for me, is how long that is.
So it's the opportunities go up, that's what I'm touching on.
Yeah, I know. Um, the other thing is, uh, there's this idea of enablement that I don't think is, is giving, being given enough, we, yeah. So for example, housing, okay? We focus money and supervisory time and stuff on housing. If at the same time we get, the, the planners are saying, well, almost everything is mixed use. You could have some corner stores, you could have, um, restaurants and, 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 you know, little entertainment, things like arcades, anywhere in a housing neighborhood, as long as, you know, you do it in a way that's not going to break the neighborhood, then the private sector will come in and ensure that we have a certain aspect of livability in our neighborhoods. Um, whereas if we have really rigid, um, zoning like, like single family, uh, you don't get that and you get, you get food deserts and you get automobile dependency and all of that stuff. So by, by using modern, uh, zoning philosophies, you know, we, we can let go of some of these priorities and they will happen by themselves, because we create opportunity.
I see all of these, uh, a group of ladders on a wall, some are further along to the top of the, the roof line than others. And, uh, when you come and talk to us and say, we can complete this aspect of it, uh, that seems like a good priority goal to me. Uh, in that sense, that's why I, I kind of think that what is further along, what is in our, uh, in our ability to actually to finish it or to, to come to a conclusion on at least one of the projects, uh, seems to be, uh, a good way of approaching it, and that is to deal with housing and affordable and attainable, and also, uh, transportation, maybe thinking outside the box on, on certain things and recognizing, uh, you know, what is going to be attractive to the, the population along that order, what seems to not be so attractive to the population. Um, again, I want to stress, I think everything should fall under the equity and sustainable throughout, uh, even your operational aspect, because that sends such a strong message, because it sends a strong message to the, uh, every employee from the, the assistant city managers down, uh, uh, to the, the new hire. And, uh, and it also sends an outward message to all of the, um, folks along that we're going to do that. In a time when that has been an Achilles' heel for a lot of communities, where they have forgotten about that and, uh, gotten themselves in a lot of trouble over that, that should be the, the one thing that, as you said, you know, runs throughout the whole, uh, uh, whole, uh, program here. And so I, I would put that, that above, operational, and again, shift everything to the right, and then talk about priorities within that scope, because everything is about equity and sustainability throughout.
Thank you for that, I, I agree. And it also sends a message to any, um, commercial entity that wants to enter our city. This is, this is what we focus on throughout everything, so when you want to come into our city, this is, this is priority for us. Everything we do, you have to do what you want to do.
So we have a little bit of time left and I haven't heard from you, Jen, for a little bit, I heard, uh, housing and early childhood.
Well, I'll reiterate, I, I, I think I've heard echoes of what I tried to say earlier in terms of how much, how much control we have, those things that, that we can use something about. Part of my frustration, for example, with the 100% renewable energy goal, not that that is the righteous goal, but as I recall, some, as we saw the other night, a huge percentage of what we're going to be able to accomplish in the last two years is totally dependent on the RPA. So, not that we wouldn't, you know, focus on this, but if I had to make a choice between housing and childcare, and I, and I would make the case, again, everything we've talked about here in terms of equity, housing and childcare, and I would discount transportation as the three biggest, uh, differences we could make in terms of a, a more equitable community. We won't stabilize in an economically viable, we're not going to stabilize a workforce. You know, we're not going to see the kind of economic development we'd like to see if we don't solve or at least make progress in the housing and catch childcare funds, and there's tons of data to support that. So, so in terms of the rank order, I kind of, I, I, I think, I steam, as much as I love, you know, the visioning process, those are totally kind of opportunistic. I agree with Joan, we don't have a lot of control. You know, but I do think we ought to have a sharp vision, so when somebody brings a proposal, we can, we can both signal what we, you know, what that is, and when somebody brings a proposal, we can make decisions relatively quickly about does it fit or not? If it doesn't, come back later when you have something that, that aligns with what we, what we expect or we aspire to see from you. But the basics for me are really clear, and I understand if I, this conversation goes back to some degree to what you suggested at the end of your presentation yesterday, or at some point, about organized abandonment or permission to stop doing some things. This tees that, I hope, tees up what you're able to say no to, to us or to somebody else.
Actually, you all, here's what I heard when I was watching head nuts, people were talking. Housing, childcare, transportation in some component are foundational. The others are there, we continue working on those. Uh, and I have the ability to then come in operationally and go, here's where we are, here's our capacity. With, with sort of those three sitting at, at the pinnacle of what we need to focus on. Is that a fair statement that you all agree with?
Thumbs up.
Just for you.
Sort of. Well, so we've sort of come to the idea of cross cutting attributes. We don't do anything without preserving equity and sustainability as we do it. And I would like to add climate action to that, it's a cross cutting attribute. And I would also like to add Vision Zero as a cross cutting attribute, you know? Because safe is, is the main attribute of the transit priority, which is an activity that the city does. So you get this, and, and climate is the same way, because, um, because there's such an equity penalty to ignoring that. Um, you know, not to mention the whole thing of future generations, but for people alive today, there's such an equity penalty, penalty to doing it. So I think, Harold, you've got an matrix, you know, you've got, um, the ways that the city, how much control the city must exert, but then we've got this paradigm or framework that everybody who comes in and works with us has to, has, has to abide by.
I think it's how, and how we do things, and it's a why, but it's not a what, and the goal should be the what.
And I think we, as we get into now, diving into these individually, we can get at, because I'm going to bring some tensions that are kind of at play within these individual goals. When, if something's cross cutting within the goal itself, where do you start choosing? Because there are choices in this, and, and we have to go to the next session of the example I would give you. You can build a hundred housing units, and you bring in some of these, uh, components in terms of, you know, renewable energy and distributed energy, and it takes it from, you can build a hundred units or you can't build a hundred units, just because of the ad, what starts waiting? Because that's the reality for us, as we're looking at housing projects, and, and there are many choices in that.
Yeah, and remember the SES, you know, you, you've got a way, and if it's a difference between you can't build it without it's being sustainable, then maybe you have to build it anyway. But if it's a distinction between ninety-eight units or a hundred units, but we don't ruin our, um, demand profile on PRPA, build the ninety-eight, not a hundred.
Right, I, yeah, I'm talking the extreme of the.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. All right, well, I can go ahead and take a five minute break. Our next conversation will be for dive and do the maps around electrification, climate emergency work, and I just never do a ladder too. So I have a bunch of presenters that will be coming up, so go ahead and take a little five minute break. Okay, so we're going to continue on with the agenda for our retreat. But one thing I'd like for you to think a little bit about, um, is now that you've given, um, you know, certainly that was a great conversation, by the way, around which things need to happen, what things we have control over, um, you know, which things we just need to seize opportunities around. But I'd like for you to think a little bit about what does success look like? What does success look like in each of those five areas? So now you have these five areas, housing, early childhood, transportation, the 100% renewable energy, climate action, beneficial electrification, and steam. What does success look like? We're going to come back to that, but we're going to actually start with the 100% renewable energy, climate action, beneficial electrification, because that's where our agenda says we're going to go on. So I'm going to turn it over to Susan and Lisa, who are going to give you a presentation. At the end of that presentation, and depending on how timing looks like, I'm going to ask you what the success looked like in this area first, and transportation, which is also part of the presentation, and then we'll come back to housing. So we may flip around a little bit, we're going to make sure we are accommodating a giant tire truck, um, you know, you're going to love all this, but I would, uh, like, that's what I'd like for you to kind of start to think about in your minds as we move forward. Okay, Lisa, I'll turn it over to you and Susan.
Okay. All right, good morning, Mayor Peck and members of council. Lisa Novak, Sustainability Manager with Strategic Integration. I'm here today with my colleague Susan Bartlett from LPC. Uh, and we're going to be getting into the climate emergency resolution and resulting roadmaps and work that have come out of that. If you, I know that the sound can be kind of weird in here, so if you all can't hear me at any point in time, please just wave or, or holler at me. Uh, so just to quickly ground us in the, in the foundational, uh, components of the climate emergency resolution, which as you all remember was passed in 2019, uh, the primary focus was really taking immediate and accelerated action to address the climate crisis. And council appointed the Climate Action Task Force, which was responsible for developing the recommendations to accelerate climate action. And it also called for engaging frontline communities in the planning, decision and implementation, which happened through the Just Transition Plan Committee, which ran concurrently. The Climate Action Task Force came up with their recommendations in the six topic areas here, which we went over a little bit on Tuesday, with the foundation being equity, so really the understanding that all of our climate action work has to really consider and look at the equity impacts as well as the opportunities that we can build into all of this work. And then all of those recommendations came together to be the Climate Action Recommendations Report. This is just a quick refresher of what you all saw on Tuesday, so when we talk about accelerating climate action, uh, that's looking at the two components, reducing our, our greenhouse gas emissions. So we went through on Tuesday the results from our 2021 inventory, showing that our primary emissions come from electricity, natural gas and transportation, so that's really what we will be focusing on today. And then also the adaptation side, so making sure we're preparing our community for the impacts of climate change. This is just a slide to show that this work doesn't happen in isolation, and a lot of the conversation you all were, were just talking about really speaks to that, that there's a lot of work that's housed in these various plans, uh, that, that's taken on by departments across the organization. housed in these various plans that's taken on by departments across the organization. So one of the foundational plans being Envision Longmont, the comprehensive plan that has the primary tenants of sustainability and resilience. Obviously, the sustainability plan, which includes all of the recommendations from the greenhouse gas report, and also the transportation roadmap, which we'll talk just a little bit about briefly shortly. The Climate Action Recommendations Report, which overlaps with a lot of work, the work from the sustainability plan. And one of those recommendations specifically was the Beneficial Building Electrification Plan, which Susan will get into shortly. And then, of course, one of the driving goals really being that transition to 100% renewable electric energy supply by 2030. So that, I'm going to hand it to Susan to get into those items, and then we'll circle back.
So Mayor Peck, council members, I'm Susan Bartlett. I'm the Director of Energy Strategies and Solutions at LPC. Thanks for letting us talk today. It was good and interesting to hear your conversation around the 100% renewable electric supply goal. It's important information for us. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about that and where we are and how it supports some of the things that we used to talk about with the sustainability plan and the Climate Action Recommendation Report. And it's going to take a concerted effort for us to achieve this goal. And part of that is intrinsically related to the 100% carbon free electricity by 2030. And I just wanted to bring to your attention some of the things that are underway at that utility scale level with new solar coming onboard at Black Hollow. That's in Boulder County. There's also an RFP that's out for utility scale solar and storage. They're looking at other evaluation tools around how to use storage and local sustainability, and where's the best place to put that, looking at potential wind projects. And interestingly, and probably more effective for us, while it's effective for us because it all ties together, but they're doing a potential study, looking at the impact of distributed energy resources, so solar and battery and all of our devices, as well as the added load of electric vehicles and building electrification. So they're doing a potential study, multiple generation scale, and also looking at some distribution level impacts. And then we'll be doing some forecasting. We're working closely with them on that. Platte River is also getting ready to join the Southwest Power Pool, and that's an energy market to help us with resiliency and to manage a dynamic supply in the future. So we're excited about that. And all of the things over here on the left, I think of this as a yes and to endeavor.
Sorry, Susan, I just lowered the lights so people could see in the back. I didn't want to start over. You were telling me it had happened.
All good. Yes, all good. Thanks. So Platte River is working hard on its end. We have to do our part. And the things on the left are, you know, kind of the big, the big categories of areas that we're working on the 100% renewable goal, as well as reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So I wanted to share some things that we're doing locally in addition to what Platte River is doing. We are talking with Platte River about areas on our distribution grid where we might locate battery storage to help with some resilience and help us to learn how to use that technology. We're looking at an RFP for solar on city facilities this year. We keep hearing more and more about other opportunities where we have buildings that might benefit from solar. And we continue to develop a model for a subscription service for community solar here in Longmont. I wanted to bring up the solar and storage, the waste water treatment. This is a project that actually includes energy efficiency with some new equipment that's going in, new grower equipment that's going in, plus solar, plus storage, and city facilities. So we get to benefit from all the data and all the learning that's going to happen there. And then Darrell and his team at LPC is working on smart grid roadmap. And what that's going to do is help us kind of understand our own distribution grid a little bit better, as well as understand the impacts of these distributed energy resources that are going to come onto our grid in the future, and making sure that we understand what the key strengths are, but we also understand what the potential is. This summer, also, we're going to look at rates through a little bit of a different lens. We want to be able to equate the value of solar on our system, the value of demand response where people can provide some variability in their use of our energy and determine rates that support and promote programs that help us manage our load a little better. But we also want to make sure that we're being equitable in how we distribute our rates among all of our rate classes. And that's kind of a big deal this summer. And then I wanted to talk about locally installed solar. So this isn't city owned or LPC driven. It is our customers who are putting solar on their properties. Currently, well, at the end of 2022, we had about six megawatts of installed solar. And that's just a number. If you don't think about this stuff all the time, but I think what's interesting about 2022 is we had a 54% increase over all the previous years that we've been tracking. So there's definitely interest, and there are extended federal incentives, and there's just a lot out there, a lot of information out there about installing solar. And we want to make sure that we're kind of capturing that moment and working with these customers as they are, as they are interconnecting with our grid. And then I wanted to, I wanted to wrap up this slide just by saying that we have not forgotten energy efficiency. That's kind of core to everything that we're working on. If we don't use it, we don't have to generate it, which helps us with our goal. And I did want to take the opportunity to talk about the Beneficial Building Electrification Plan. So council accepted a plan in October, and wanted to give you a heads up of where we are and some of the strategies in the plan. And also just remind you, you know, Lisa had this slide before that talked about how all of these plans kind of play together and support one another. And this is part of the Climate Action Recommendations Report, as we built this plan. Also, I want you to think a little bit about the pie chart that she showed, where our emissions, a big chunk of our emissions is related to energy use in buildings. And so building electrification and energy efficiency should help us kind of chip away at that part of that pie. So with 13 strategies in the plan, the nine that are in blue here are strategies that we're working on diligently, and we have some short term goals that we're working toward with those. The four yellow on the bottom, we haven't forgotten about, they're important, but they have a little longer runway. So we're staying plugged internationally on what's happening in these areas, so we can react quickly if we need to. But we're really focusing on these top nine.
Real quick on the novel interest financing. Sandy and I were in a meeting, and Jenny was, we were in a meeting, and there's a local, someone locally that is starting a project to deal with this issue. And I'm scheduling a meeting. So that may be something that our other discussion is that we can pull that off. It just happens, part of a different conversation.
It would be great to. Would that mean that if a private program took that over, that it wouldn't be a constraint on our customer management system, the way we have been assuming that it is?
It's too hard to tell.
I think it was just Thursday.
I mean, yeah, we don't know. It's just, it's a possibility. I just wanted to throw that out here because to our other conversation, that may be something that we don't necessarily take on, but we partner, and that reduces the workload.
Could be nice though.
So I don't want to go through each of the 13, because we don't have very much time today, but I did want to talk about highlight, provide some highlights and things I'm particularly excited about. One is the electric grid evaluation. As you all know, we have advanced meter infrastructure being deployed. This is going to provide us with data we really never had before about our distribution grid, about how our customers use energy, about how we may be able to deploy distributed energy resources in a way that is helpful and going to require some mitigation. So this is really important in terms of how we move ahead, as well as managing that increased load from building electrification and electric vehicles. Outreach and education. This is true for any plan that you have. One of the most important things is you help people understand what your plan is about, what is required to do, and what you're going to do. I think what feels complicated to me about education and outreach right now is there's so much information out there. I'm submerged in this on a daily basis, and I just feel like it's kind of in every direction. I don't know how that's happening in general, but there's just a lot of information about what we need to be doing, how fast, where there's money, and where there's not money. You know, who's eligible for what? There's a ton of stuff. So we're trying to gather this information and convince it into, into a format that is a little more digestible, that can help consumers navigate that decision making process a little bit better. And it has to start with the basics, like what the heck is building electrification, and how does it apply to my space? And can I afford to do it? And what are the resources? And, you know, what do I do next? So we're trying to narrow the pool of information to make it more useful. And we're able to do that with some of our partners, like Efficiency Works, and some of the efforts that are going on at the region and at the state level. But I'll say, there's so much happening in this space that sometimes regionally and at the state level, it adds more confusion. So again, we're trying to kind of condense what's available. Program collaboration. We talked about partnerships earlier. This is really important for anything we want to do on the electrification front. Our partner for rebates is Efficiency Works. They're part of Platte River, so they are us, and they administer our rebate programs for us and for Collins Loveland Minister's Park as well. And they've made huge strides just in the past six months, I'd say, in really putting electrification at the top of their programs, primarily their residential programs. So a lot of this new stuff focused on electrification is going to go live April 1. And that's going to include advising that really does delve into electrification. What is it? How, you know, how can I do it? Does it make sense for my house? Does it not make sense for my house? I had a contractor tell me this, but then I hear this other thing. So they're building that into their advising for consumers. They're also really beefing up the incentives for equipment that we want to implement, like heat pump space heating, heat pump water heating, and oh, by the way, weatherization and insulation, because we want them to do that first. And that's another key with the, with the advisors is that, you know, building electrification really isn't going to work if we get, if we get it wrong out of the gate by not having that efficiency and building envelope component to go with it, we have to do them in tandem. Otherwise, people are going to have bad experiences on something that's kind of expensive. We're also continuing to work with Boulder County. They have their own set of incentives. And, you have a question?
Well, since you interrupted, I was trying not to. But, but, yeah, are we sort of meshing with these two agencies as bar fulfillment, or are we going to try to push Boulder County to the side and completely work with Efficiency Works? How does, how does that work because they offer us some of the same services?
The way that it works in Longmont is a little bit muddy for consumers sometimes, because you can start with Boulder County, or you can start with Efficiency Works. But what they try to do is their advisors try to coalesce the program. So by the way, you can get this from us in Boulder County, but you can also get stacked resources from the Efficiency Works. And that's what we're going to have to do with the state as well. The state will have a rebate program. It was supposed to come out mid-year. Looks like it's going to be the end of 2023 or the beginning of 2024, because the money's coming slowly from DOE. And so we want to make sure that whoever our advisors are that are talking to customers understands how to connect all the dots on all the programs that are available. Building codes related to electrification are an important component. Longmont is a participant in the regional code cohort. We're going to have final recommendations from the cohort later this spring. Those are going to move through our code process and will be brought back to council later this year. And then I wanted to end on something that I think is really exciting. And Lisa is leading this collaboration. And it's a collaboration on sustainability, Longmont Power Communications, Housing and Community Investment, Longmont Housing Authority, Efficiency Works, and potentially Energy Outreach Colorado in areas where that's going to make sense. And the objective of this demonstration is take, is to take a whole home approach to improving income qualified residents. And so what we're looking to do is address health and safety in a home, accessibility in a home, efficiency, envelope, weatherization, those kinds of things, and then we want to electrify. And we want to do this in several different housing types, so that we can get about those types of situations. So we're looking at small multifamily, we're looking at mobile homes, and we're looking at single family homes that come in through our rehabilitation program here in the city. It's an opportunity for us to get some data. We know it's going to be expensive, but just how expensive? How much does it cost? Bring, bring a home to that healthy place all around that's operationally sustainable over time. So we're going to be gathering cost data, we're going to be gathering workforce data. If we want to do these big projects, do we have the available labor to come in and help us get this work done? And then also, if we want to be able to scale it, what does it take? What resources do we need? And for the, for the demonstration, we're applying for energy efficiency, community block grant funds to help us, along with the Boulder Canyon Sustainability Tax Funds and some LPC dollars. We're also looking at whether or not this would be a good fit for the Department of Energy Buildings Prize. So again, looking for a little bit more funding that we can build moment with, and I'm pretty excited about that. You know, these are all building related, and that's that big piece of the pie. But Lisa's also going to talk a little bit about transportation.
Susan, could I just point out one thing? In terms of the housing imperative, this is a bigger piece of it than it sounds like, because all of these lower end housing, existing housing that need to be fixed, those buildings will become unlivable if extreme heat gets much worse. And that means we've got more housing to build. So it's, it may be expensive to change, to fix these buildings, but it's probably cheaper than building new ones. So, sorry.
Thanks, Susan. And so lastly, I just want to touch on the equitable carbon free transportation roadmap. So as you all remember from the graph, really electricity, natural gas, and transportation are our biggest sources of emissions. This was passed in 2021, or included in 2021. And just a reminder, the purpose of this document wasn't to set new goals or identify new recommendations. It was really acknowledging, we have some pretty good plans on how to, how to reduce emissions from the electricity, natural gas sector. We know we have a big chunk of emissions from transportation, and we have some goals around reducing our transportation emissions. This was really to look at all the recommendations from the sustainability plan from Envision Longmont, and how can we prioritize those, not only for reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector, but also for those equitable outcomes. And it was looking more broadly at transportation, not just EVs, like an EV ready mitts roadmap, because we recognize that we really have to have a robust transportation system that really makes it easy for people to get out of cars through walking and biking and rolling and access to transit and all of those things, all of the things that you all were talking about earlier. And then also electrifying our transportation system, whether those be personal vehicles, car share, other mobility options, transit, all of those sorts of things. So I just wanted to remind folks that we have this as well. We're working through this, the transportation roadmap. And then we have a big opportunity this year as, as Phil and folks are going to be updating the Transportation Mobility Plan. This will be rolled into that. We'll be working with Phil on that as well. Did I lose my, lost my ability to advance for some reason? Okay. There we go. Okay. You also on the slide on Tuesday, this is just a quick synopsis in terms of how are we doing in implementing the recommendations from the Climate Action Recommendations Report. So this shows the work that's underway, that we've talked to you about quite a few of these things, as I mentioned on Tuesday. The one area we're kind of behind in right now is education and outreach because of some staff turnover that we have. So with that, I'm going to hand it off for questions and discussion. So with that, I'm going to hand it off for questions and discussion.
Lisa, could you go back to the previous slide because we didn't have a chance to read it?
Sorry about that.
Thank you. We still know it's questions.
And Lisa, the green means progress?
Yes.
Very cool.
I'm going to take you to the museum for the Big Picture Climate Action Lecture Series. It's great.
Yeah, it's been really great. So I guess I should have a green star there. I'm missing that one. Sorry.
More green stars!
Yes, more green stars.
Better than a gold star, a green star. All right, council, so we're going to fold into what you guys have been talking about, which you all have been talking about up to this point. So when you think about this work, what does it centricate on?
It is my kiddo. Loving the trees in the park, yeah. He gets excited when I put photos of him in the picture.
I do too. I think he's adorable.
He's an emerging star, that's for sure.
So let's go back to this conversation that we started with, right? So what does success look like? So you just heard kind of a reexpression of the roadmaps and how they're all working towards these goals. What does success look like in this particular area? There's no right or wrong yet, so we're just going to brainstorm for a few minutes. Can you go back to Lisa's slide? Which one do you want? The last one?
Yes, please.
Not the cute thing. He is baby now. Can I?
It looks like you went to your presentation, see?
Hi, yes, I have a question. Is there... You know, we're bringing out this smart meters plan, and do we have any concerns around unidentified ADUs? And how they will be impacted? And how will be our response? Is that really... Curious?
I would think... So our data for the leaders who are customers aren't necessarily identifying whether it's a ADU or not, but it might have a at-risk within A to B or something like that. That would always exist and be separate of the AMIs because basically it's a meter swap versus meter swap versus some other change.
I think though, we're... I mean, I think if something already had an ADU, we wouldn't be able to see the difference. If all of a sudden, and you could probably probably see the difference now, if all of a sudden you see a significant shift in work usage, you would know what's going on, but I think we would see that now. A little different than typically, the customers would bring that to our attention when they go, well, my bills do not. But it may be easier to see it once we do it, but I don't know if it's going to necessarily show as something that already exists.
Right, to Harold's point, we still have monthly data now, which will have a secondary layer associated with a lot of programs and policies and other things that we're trying to move forward with these goals.
Was there a specific concern that you...
No, I was just curious because that all of a sudden it comes out, and people are like, they were keeping it kind of under their hat. They were enjoying the profits from it and everything. And now, I can see a little bit of stress in the community around some of these things just because of that. Maybe that's self-owned stress that people bring on themselves, but nevertheless, stress that might be something that we should just be kind of...
I guess probably the simplest way to look at it is a swap versus swap out of the old ADU. And it's not any type of, let's say, policing action.
We need to... We're going to take you back to the question.
So Shawna, what does success look like for you in this area?
Oh, well, you know, I think it's close to what we have here. You know, when we were looking at that stuff there, I often think of the difference between the goals of this council and the council that I served under the past and how dramatic they really are. And if they were looking at climate in the country at times, and how sometimes people get thinking that somehow they're not getting the services that they want or intended or expected, that they might try to go in a completely different direction or think that we're moving too fast in a climate awareness mode. And I'm a little concerned about, you know, we put all this effort in, everything to have something changed there, and then to drop it is a political issue opposed to being a practical issue of what's good. There's this idea that somehow it's a either/or choice. And what's good for, you know, business and community is also good. And also good for the department. They don't have to be posing odds to each other. They can be...
Can be complementary.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. So Shawna, would it be fair to say that success to you is following the climate action, the Climate Action Task Force recommendations continuing on the past?
I would say so.
And achieving, I mean, achieving these things? Marsha?
Well, first of all, I would like to say that this was a really well-structured presentation. And I'm feeling more optimistic, which you know is not my normal tone. I'd like to point out that it's really clear from the way these line up that this is a cross-cutting effort, that it touches everything we do. And as long as we adhere to that, I think that that minimizes the effort, Harold, for all of the different pieces. Because these things, if it just becomes a matter of course, if it's pulled down into the core as is clearly being done here, then that helps us in terms of operational effort.
It does. There are some pieces in here where that still shows itself. You know, as I was looking at this in terms of building code changes, you know, that's in operationally into the core where I have to get involved in terms of capacity because we have eight building inspectors that have to manage a full code, that have to be part of the process because they're the ones that have to interact with the public. And so when you hear, say, the more we can align it with this, when we do a full code, it's easier, that's me to what we talked about yesterday because they still have to process what's coming in and have their core work that they have to do. And so that's where you're seeing the management coming in. So what they're doing as we're looking at the system to core of these goals. So there still are pinch points in this that will show up based on what other folks are working on.
This is a question before somebody else gets the floor, that I've asked before, and maybe this has changed because of the constraints that other municipalities are under financially. Is there any more availability of consultants to rectify the different code changes that we need? Because, you know, we're touching land use, we're touching electricity and building codes, and we're preparing for the lighting round, and there are so many places where the codes are intertwined that, Floyd, would be great if we could get some help on that.
There are some. It doesn't necessarily limit me. This is another example, like public-private partnerships. It doesn't necessarily... You may say this a little time, but not a lot of time, and still have them to add because you still need the right staff to manage it. And so it depends on how we approach it. What I found with consultants, it's not as simple as you bring them in because they don't know the nuances that we have to deal with. And if you let them go to on their own, we always end up finding we have to back up. And so I think that's a piece that it doesn't necessarily relieve it. It may relieve it a little bit. I will tell you, in some cases, it's at work. We really brought the bring consultants in because of what we have to do. So it's a piece of the puzzle that we're constantly trying to approach it. But I think we do utilize consultants in this.
Eddie, you want to just say on the code piece, that's part of why we participated in the DOLA code cohort process because that was grant-funded to bring consultants in to develop essentially model codes for the whole county that we were a part of, including folks from building inspection and boss, and that came up and been part of that process to bring the nuances of our community into that conversation. But then, once those recommendations are finalized, we will go through our regular process to make sure that the final outcomes are aligned with the needs of the community. So that was essentially it, a consultant that's been helping develop those.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
And of course, when we talk about that lighting round, you can always toss that on the list too. It's a brainstorm, right? And so there's no reason why you couldn't add that because it's a brainstorming conversation too.
Look, and Shawna just pointed something out that we also have to watch is we think we're the only one on the 2021 code. So if the cohort is almost the 18 code, 15 or 18 codes, we're farther ahead. So what we also then have to watch is what are they putting in that they already be in the code? Because we're a step ahead of the other communities.
That's been a concern of mine because of the DOLA recommendations.
And there were two phases to that, so one of which was a requirement to get all the participating communities on the 2021 code because a lot of them aren't and have certain strength, any amendments. And then the second was a path to net zero by 2030. Net zero and new construction by 2030. And that's the next round of recommendations that will be coming out. They'll look specifically at some additional solar elements as well as the building electrification and then some auxiliary components as well.
So are we seeing that the new construction work on the U of M now? Maybe not net zero because, you know, because windows and insulation and stuff like that. But there are already coming in all-electric, so...
I haven't seen the new... I don't think the newest codes are out yet for 2024, so I don't...
No, no, I'm not asking what the codes are. I'm asking what's going to happen.
There are projects coming in that... Daryl and I have one that is all-electric, utilizing solar and heat pumps. And so we are seeing those come into the system, even though the code doesn't require it. They're coming in with that. As you look at other companies, some of those companies are making it part of their... This is just all of your business. So we are seeing that change.
Yeah. I'd like to just get it out there that at least some of these, like moving gas lines, could be much earlier than the code, in the code than DOLA recommends for the whole region.
Here.
So I agree with the Climate Action Recommendations. I understand staffing challenges, but the education and outreach is very, 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 very important. Because when I came, when I got on council, Susan broke it down for me, and we had a meeting, and there was so much that I learned, just although we had a one-on-one and she spent time with me. But I learned much more about why it's so important. You know, because as a single mom, working two jobs, you know, you worry about life and paying bills and taking care of your kids and your family. And so the big picture, right? That's so important for our community to understand. And then I think that they will buy into it and follow the instructions and the recommendations that we're asking them. So I do understand the challenges, but that is really, really key in order for the community to buy into all that. We're asking all of you know that this, we believe that this... All of this is better for the future of our city. But not everyone will understand that because what's going to happen when all this is implemented, we're going to have so many people come to council that they didn't know this was happening. And so that's why education is so important in our community. So I definitely agree with all the recommendations, great presentation also on Tuesday. I just really, really emphasized the education and outreach.
So Shakita, would it be fair to say that success looks like all in Longmont? Understand what's at stake, what they can do, and what resources are available?
Absolutely.
Do you have anything like that?
Yes.
I agree. What else does success look like for the council of this arena?
So I also agree with your Climate Action Recommendations, and thank you for this presentation. It really spelled it out for us much more than I understood that was going on locally. As far as the education and outreach, I agree with Shakita. And I'm wondering if you would consider reaching out to Eddie Gutierrez, who is going to do a PRPA presentation as well. He said sometime in Lenzon. And maybe we can do the big picture with PRPA, and then how does it affect us locally? What can we do locally? Where are we going? How is it marrying to each other so that...
And is that a presentation he's giving in council?
No, it's going to be community.
Oh, okay. So I'm adding it to what success that Shakita said included here.
Correct. The other thing on the land use and water, I'm also in favor of extending agricultural zoning. And then monitoring over time, when you go downtown, paper parking, if you could, as you get into that, Lisa, make sure that we, the residents, know that there's alternative transportation before we do that. So we can not go to paper parking before we have local alternative transportation because you can't say, you can't park here in Los Bay, but there's no other way to get downtown. So I think we could work together and sell that.
I think it's under the monitor section. So, Marsha, I want to make sure I caught, because I think maybe this is an okay way to place to what you're talking about, consider contract services to... Rectify is not the right word to...
Well, rectify is, I guess, too technical a word, but to make all the effective codes consistent. So, yeah, rectify is the right word, but it might not be understood. So this might be a case where using the wrong words is good. I wanted to ask, because I think I'm in favor of extending agricultural zoning, but I also remember that on the Climate Action Task Force, there were big discussions about what that means. It does not necessarily mean buy more open space. So can you explain what that really means?
Yeah, my recollection of that one, and I'm going to apologize that I don't have all of these as committed to memory as I did a year or two ago, but was looking specifically at making sure our zoning codes allowed for small-scale agriculture production. And one of the reasons why there was a lot of conversation, this got put in the midterm, is because a lot of our planning folks felt like we did already have a lot of that in place, and so we just needed to do some additional research to understand the intent of it, to make sure that we have everything in place already and to see if there was anything additional that we needed. Because there currently aren't any zoning regulations that say you can't do backyard agriculture. There are certain things in place around even having, you know, beehives and chickens and all that kind of stuff. So just reading the names to make sure we understand everything of that.
And I think in this, words really matter. When we say axo, because if it's what you can do in your backyard, that's one thing. If you grow out and look at axoing holistically for the community, you're now putting two, your items straight up against each other, which is housing versus this.
And that was why I asked, like, does there more open space? But there's still a third word in that. And I hope the state legislature helps us with this on HOAs because where's Peta and Laura? Are they not here? Oh, Jody's here! David.
David.
Right, right, right. I keep forgetting I have electricity. But all this great work has been done on using native grasses as turf and all that stuff. And that's also kind of under that umbrella. And it increases our sustainability without making... It's another way to make other people do work.
Well, I think your HOV is right, because you can do it, but you still have your HOV restrictions that you have to adhere to. And if they're saying, you know, that this type or whatever, that's what you have to do.
Yeah, there's something in the legislature about that now, but we're not sure what's going to happen.
So any other success?
The other thing I would add, I like your, what you, how you summarized what Shakita shared. When the first time, early in my experience in council, is when Lisa, you brought what you were, where you were, where you were headed with the work. And I know I was, I got labeled as a data guy or, you know, the metrics guy very early in my tenure in council, which is okay with me. But I do remember during the first time we saw this, as much as I appreciate metrics, it's possible to get a washer to see data without meaning. And I'm a little concerned, as you talked about the variety of, you know, just the fire hose of information and options, you're having a hard time making sense of it. Add to that these metrics, and my question is, some of these, there may be some dependencies in this. To get to one metric, you've got to get four right, or right, roll it up, figure out how to, not to simplify, but to get to the far side of the complexity with meaning for the public. That's my concern. I'm not certain, and I've been in, I've listened to this, I've been in this conversation. If I have a hard time answering the question, given the data, what are the most important results or indicators in terms of what really matters? If I can't answer that, how in the hell can anybody in the community answer it? And that's, that's my concern. So I don't, I don't have an answer to how we measure success, except to get to a more robust indicators that we, that the community would resonate with, that really matter. If we can get this right, and why it matters to us in terms of economics, in terms of generations, in terms of, you know, the future of a community, you know, however we can describe it, that's my biggest concern.
It's the so what?
It is the so what. It's, it's some, at a level, in a, in, within a context that matters to people and make them understand.
And I think that ties to what Shakita was saying, is the outreach. And so maybe part of the vision is what Sandy has, but to communicate with our residents for easily understandable.
Yeah, that, that's the part, what I wouldn't want to miss, that the education is the means.
Right.
But the end is understanding, right? And you could have a great means, but if we're, if there is so much data, and it's a level of people can't, it just can't stick. It's got to be sticky enough for people to walk away with, and I don't know that, not that it's not great work. I don't mind being critical of the work. I, I think it's a great presentation, and I love the work that's being done. But it's got to be sticky enough for people to say, yeah, we got to get this right. Yeah, wear this together, it matters to us.
So how do you take the details and elevate it into some broad core pieces that are understandable forever?
So relatable, too, because, you know, if it doesn't impact your day to days, you don't have buy-in to see it through.
Yeah, which is why I would like the, the same, the same community outreach that's possible to be done with PRPA, because I, I don't want it to sound like PRPA is going to change our city. It is going to be us that are going to change our city. So maybe break it down into bites instead of the, a big picture, just.
Well, I think I made a couple of things that I'm adding in, and I want to remind everyone about the project that Lisa and I are working on around sustainability communications. So I added to Shakita's statement, easily understandable, relatable, and accessible. The information needs to be able to be retained. And I think that's why we decided to contract with the Moto Communications, which most of you filled out that survey. Thank you very much, that always was important to you, sustainability. And they will help us to craft that sustainability communications plan. And they have absolutely identified head bite size, relatable, actionable, accessible are the pieces that they need to do. So in place, in progress, not in place, in progress.
I think there's one really essential piece that was not explicitly mentioned in this, and it's about metrics, and it's also about understandable day to day. Because much of this gives us, gives us more control over our rates, right? If we have distributed energy resources that are controllable, I was thrilled that there's already six megawatts of solar in Longmont. I, I don't know where it's hiding, I guess places I'd never go. But, but ultimately, when you say, you know, yeah, if, if we can manage, if, if we can keep from, from using electricity, using as much electricity at times when it's expensive from PRPA, then we're not going to be paying as much. And if we can get that piece across to the public that's supporting this work and buying into these plans and letting us help you make a plan to replace your gas furnace with something else before it breaks, you know, then everybody's going to understand that, that that's going to hit them in the pocketbook in a positive way. And, and so I think that, that metric definitely needs to be right at the top in the, in the outreach. And it, you know, it may be years, maybe years before we can have an impact, but hey, that's like, you know, the, the only one more rate update cycle.
And I would argue that hitting in the pocketbook is the thing that immediately makes it relatable.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Well, I think, I think that's a piece in what Shawna said, that what I've seen historically in different communities, and it kind of takes you back to the core conversation again yesterday. There is an elasticity in a community in terms of what people are willing to pay, what they want to pay. And when you find that elasticity, it will snap back on you and cause you to reset everything you've done. There's communities very close to us that are going through that right handle. If you read the stories on Westminster and the water system and what they need to do, they saw the elasticity and it popped back, and it completely is shifting what they can do. And I think in all of these conversations, we've got to think about that, too. What I'm talking to my folks about is we're there. I mean, when you see many, many raise rates, when you see inflation getting, people are starting to hit that, and that's the equity that's, that we started sliding along, is to understand what that means. And I think as you're thinking of this, just keep that in mind of everything, because I've seen it happen in hundreds of communities around the nation where it was snapped back on you. And then you're starting over with something completely different.
So just to add to that, I think in the education piece, as we see more and more families who can afford to put solar on, that our, our population needs to understand that in order for us all to benefit, we don't all need to have solar. That through PRPA and the way they, they buy energy, we can all take advantage of having the benefit of renewable energy, but not every single home in the city needs to have solar on it. And I think that that will ease the disparity between the lower socioeconomic part of our population and that they feel like they're not the, that, that message has got to get out, that because I don't have solar, then I'm not going to be able to have renewable energy. That's not true. So I don't know how to message that, but I think it's a real important part.
You know, it's part of the rate, the retail rate structure that we can make sure that it's, that it does. And, and we can have the message out there that the guy on the next block solar is lowering your cost. And, and that's something that really doesn't get out there, but, but it can, you know, because the less electricity we buy from PRPA at times when it costs a lot, means the less we have to raise our bills.
But I do think we need to be careful with how we message that. Because if I'm the guy with the sock solar, and you have that telling that somebody needs to pay me the difference. I'm just saying, so we need to, we need to message that.
As our nation and the different utility companies that PRPA buys energy from, they get more renewable energy, that will come back to our city, because they would be using more renewable energy as more utility companies put in renewables. So it's a game, that's for sure. But to Marcia's point, though, more people by putting solar on before PRPA gets that energy, correct me if I'm wrong, it could raise the rates of people who don't have solar, because they still have to purchase it, they still have to get the dollars to purchase that. That's going to come from our rates. So the people who don't have solar before PRPA is ready, their rates may go up. I, I don't know, that's just my theory, what you think is that? Does that make sense?
I think Marcia is sort of trying to think in the future.
Right.
And the different individual impact. And so we have different points around that same question.
Right.
Maybe what would be helpful is where at some point here later this year, we probably have some local discussion or something similar, would council really dive deeper into that? You know, present value, maybe future value of solar, because you also, Marcia's point, if it's producing at a time that other resources are low on renewable, and it has a higher value, it might wise if it's overproducing, you know, that it's lower value, so it's definitely very built in. We should explore that further.
But I think saying that now might be a mistake, because we kept back.
We, yes, we have to, we have to be very, right? We need to, we're putting that in, it's really, you've got, I mean.
Well, as soon as I mentioned the value of solar, that exercise that we're going to, right? That speaks exactly to what Shakita was talking about. How much is solar worth to the utility and to customers who don't have the solar on? One of the challenges we run into is we're kind of down at the state level in terms of what we have to reimburse the customers, what we have to reimburse them. So it's possible that at certain times of the day, we are overpaying for solar that's being generated, because we can get it a lot cheaper from, you know, a very large utility fuel.
Exactly.
So, but then at other times, like what Marcia said, you know, maybe there, maybe that, that fuel is covered by a cloud, and this particular homeowner is in a little bit of a sunny spot. So it's really, it's really about that, to figure out what that value is.
Right. And Shakita, the person who pays to install the solar, put it on their roof, and uses that light for city internal energy, is always getting paid back first. Then the fact that they are putting electricity back onto the grid affects the city's demand favorably. And that in turn affects other people's demand charges, so.
I just feel that we need to be very careful of that word.
Yes, but, but.
Because the exception of other people in the community.
Paying for somebody else.
Exactly, exactly. That's all. But thanks for our line now.
We're all on the learning curve, yeah. We don't, we don't have this down pat yet, so. So it is quarter till noon. We did have one other topic we were going to chat about before lunch, but it's up to you all. And I think you're popping right along with your agenda, so it's up to you whether you'd like to, or spend a few more minutes on this, or move to the street gaming process. What we thought we would do when we got through that discussion is invite Carmen Palacio from Mera to come up and talk a little bit about the work that we've been doing with the weather. Kind of give you a sense of where we are today with respect to equity work. I don't, it just seems that it would take a lot more than fifteen minutes, but that's completely off.
So are we fifty the Invision Longmont presentation now?
I thought so, yes. I was, I was just thinking that may take a little bit. Maybe it doesn't really the same size. So it's up to you, we have both of those pieces still to discuss, so it's, thank you, Suzy, for reminding me of that. So we can do either, either one, because actually that's fifteen minutes also. And this is the question Shakita brought up around, does, if we have higher density, does it increase crime? And what we did with some research to share with council to kind of help you answer that question. So you could go either direction, or no direction, and take a break.
I know the folks are out there, and the more and the.
The folks are out there with the fire trucks.
With the fire trucks.
So if we're, we're not speaking then, we'll make time. We could stop early and, you know, give away a fire truck and have lunch and then start reacting early.
Let's do that.
We'd be fine. Okay, so I'm going to give option one, and early, let's go give away a fire truck and have some lunch. Or option two, continue on. Thumbs up. One, for one, 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 one.
Thumbs up.
Okay, all right. But let's take a break. If you can just take five minutes, and we'll meet in the front.
We're going to move into.
Shakita has a question about density and crime. And what does that look like? If we increase density, does it increase crime? So we asked Lynn and Zach to take a look at this issue, and they'd like to present a couple of things for your information that you'd like to be.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. It's a great question, and often we hear that question in public hearings. But also, I think people tend to hold that one back, because it's a bit of a loaded question, and they talk about traffic. So we have been talking about Invision Longmont today and yesterday. And one of the main goals is taking advantage of those empty holes that we have in the community to get some different housing opportunities. So two of the major goals that we always cite in our staff reports, if we're having a public hearing with Planning Commission or the City Council, are probably these two, and they fall under the category of creating livable centers. And the first one talks about the importance of the diversity in housing types in the community. And the second one really talks about high density housing and where that should occur. And the Invision Longmont talks about different cores, corridors, areas of change where there's opportunities to create additional density and additional housing types. It specifically says that it should be in areas of the downtown and the mixed use employment area. And I think that's where we've seen some big changes as far as the type of residential development we're getting. So I'm going to go through some of the numbers that we've seen since we've adopted Invision, since we've adopted the zoning code to implement Invision, kind of show you what the trends are. And I'll leave the tough part to Zach to talk about, is there any relationship between crime and higher density? And just as a Steeler of his win, I would say no, because I've done this a long time, and I've never really found a connection between crime and density. There's a million variables, but he's much more of a social scientist than I am, so I'll let him get into those more details. So that's Invision Longmont, talks about additional density. If you go to the next slide, number three of forty-seven slides. So I talked about areas of change.
No, there's four slides, so. Let's jump to four.
Joni usually said zero slide, so it's really let me expand here. So an important part of Invision Longmont is here's where we're going to have areas of change. It's these areas that are red, and it's really identify some of those corridors and where we have mixed use employment, maybe employment uses that are down on their lock and, and there's opportunities to bring new housing in there. It's always great to have jobs close to housing, so it really fits that bill. And then, of course, Main Street is also an important corridor. And we've recently amended the Main Street corridor and the con plan to make higher densities and different types of housing much more possible. And then there's areas of stability, which are primarily our existing neighborhoods. Yellow is kind of a typical land use color for single family, but in this case, it doesn't mean these are all single family neighborhoods. Invision Longmont sees some change, but the level of change in the areas of stability are quite a bit reduced compared to where we're focusing in areas of change. So I thought what I would do, because we are seeing a lot of multifamily and it makes a, it makes a big input, impact on our citizens when they see a vacant lot turn into two hundred units, that's four stories high. It's, I, I understand. It, it makes kind of a shock to the system. So I thought I'd take a look at what our permit activity is. Because once you go through adopting the plan, adopting a new zoning code, then we have to build to the new code and people have to put up the money to actually get it done. So here's kind of the trend. So single-family is the blue at the top. And everybody knows what that is. That's pretty clear. That's one house for a lot, surrounded by space. It's not touching anything else. And then we have what I'm just calling attached housing. So this could really be anything from a duplex, triplex, multifamily, high-density apartments, or anything in between. We could go through and kind of figure out what all those layers are, but this is where you're probably, your affordable and your attainable housing is happening within that realm.
So I probably get my bearing right there. Is that north of sixty-six?
Yes. Yeah.
And then, so the area of change, so like right here, are those, there are houses currently there, correct?
Not many.
Or is it open space?
It's open space.
Right over there, correct?
Correct, yeah. So that's, that's the territory like neighborhood. So there currently aren't homes there. That's just right now, pretty wide open. There's a Lutheran church along that corridor. And the white bridge is not in red, but it's right before you get to Main Street.
Okay, so right over here?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the other stuff would be the vacant property kind of north of Walmart in front of the apartment apartments. And then that farm across the street. But also, I think you guys saw last year for the transportation referral.
Yes.
You asked for more density. So those are, what's that happen?
So is this whole section then something that we are looking to annex or...?
It is annexed.
It is already, or, yeah, or is it already annexed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to jump in, I think. We've actually gotten into this internally, Zach was part of this, where someone says, is it open space? And I go, that will...
Yes, yes.
That's a big piece. And that is, that is not, it's not even, that's not open space. That is undeveloped land that is owned by somebody else.
Okay.
And there's a, we've, we've got to be really careful as we're making those distinctions because a lot of times what we see in development projects is that people go, well, it's open space. It's really undeveloped land that's owned by another party. They just haven't built anything on it. And I think we see that a lot.
Okay, and that's what I wanted, I didn't, annex was an incorrect word. You decided to take either the open space or develop whole area.
Yeah, in fact, I think you'll, I think there's some apartments coming out. We call it Route sixty-six. That is just east of Walmart in that corridor. It's part of that red area. A lot of apartments are happening around the Sugar Mill. We've talked about that a little bit. Around Sandstone Ranch, we've seen a lot of density going in there. So as far as the numbers, there's a lot of levels to the multifamily attached. So I can't tell you that's all apartments. I will say that the change in permitting over the last four years has changed quite a bit. We were primarily dominated by single-family. Now, I'd say, let's see, it was twenty nineteen where about sixty percent of the permits were some kind of attached housing. Twenty twenty, that turned to, I think, eighty percent. And it was about the same in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two, as far as what we permitted out of Development Services, ninety percent was some kind of attached product. But what I wanted to show, first off, the, the vertical lines here is when we adopted the comp plan in, I think it was June of twenty sixteen. That doesn't really change things much because it's not the law. Then we went into a two-year process and adopted the new Land Development Code, which happened in, towards the end of twenty eighteen. And that's when there are, we opened up areas as far as where higher-density housing could occur. But really, it didn't have a big change, at least in the last six years, between the percentages of types of units. Where in twenty sixteen, we're still two-thirds, single-family. And we added about a third of some kind of attached process. Fast forward six years, you know, it changed about four percent, basically. So it's not a great escalation in density. And maybe I was thinking that that might be a relief. But maybe we're not doing our job well enough when we look at the goals of the comp plan. But if you, Excel just kind of drew the trend line here. There's really not a whole lot of magic to it. But even if you took the single-family line and you flattened it out at that twenty-five thousand and then you increased the multifamily at the rate it's going now, we, we still are looking at twenty years where we're still going to be a single-family community before we hit parity between attached units and single-family. So it's, it's not something that is happening overnight. But we are, I think, moving the ball forward as far as the goals of Invision Longmont. Now the tough questions. And I think Zach's got a good idea as far as the trends and some of the programs that's kind of geared towards multifamily.
Thank you, Glenn. Before I started, was there any questions that you wanted to ask about Lynn's slide or anything before I move forward?
All right. You said that it'd take about twenty years to hit parity. You say that depended on what my development code, correct? If the Land Development Code was altered or something more radical.
You're right.
You could see a difference in the trends.
Yeah, that's the rules that are set today, basically, and the economic environment that we have today. So a lot of things can affect those and stretch it out longer.
And I want to clarify something as well. So we have residents that are talking about Invision Longmont. So it is not Invision Longmont from the point, the part that you showed us for high-density. According to Invision Longmont, it would be not your residential areas.
Right.
It would be, and it was the LDC that actually changed that.
Right.
Just a correction.
Yes. Right, so the, the policy is basically, let's put higher density in those underutilized sites, a lot of them being in mixed-use employment areas. And I'd say that's the higher percentage of where we're actually seeing projects land.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, there is some change. In fact, I talked to a gentleman who was here. He, he left a statement for public to be heard. But he's concerned with the term areas of stability. Says that we need change there. And we have a mixed-use neighborhood that did allow an incremental change in the land uses under very specific conditions that can occur in those areas of change. There is some additional density, not to the point of, you know, like in a mixed-use employment area. And there is some retail if it's in a specific location that is allowed in those areas of stability.
So the code is not just for mixed-use employment areas where you can have density, but it also is for mixed-use residential areas as well for infill, is that right?
Correct, yes. And we also have mixed-use downtown that actually, in those districts, there's no cap on density. But in mixed-use neighborhood, there is. It can only, densities can only be from six to eighteen units per acre is, is like a cap, which would be the yellow areas, so...
And the density also applies to vertical?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's four with fifth floor being...
We allow four stories in the mixed-use districts with an ability to perform, to go up above with affordable housing next to transit. And there's a third, oh, mixed-use. So if you bring in retail on your ground floor, you can potentially put additional story on. That's not in the mixed-use neighborhood, though. That is specifically in mixed-use downtown, mixed-use employment. There's a third, I can't, oh, corridor. Mixed-use corridor, which is Main Street, basically.
Well, it's interesting, so talk real-time learning on this. What we're, we're learning throughout the housing side and the affordable housing side in particular is that the addition of one floor actually is a problem because under affordable housing, we'll bring federal funds into it. But then, a fifth floor changes its commercial. And when it changes it to commercial, it goes into commercial data state, which all of a sudden drastically changes the, the cost parameters of it. So as Molly and I were getting into these projects, we threw that out now that we're on a much bigger building, it's like you can't use it because it shifts the economics of the entire project. So from the affordable piece, when you say if you do this, then this, what we're realizing is it doesn't work because you can't use it based on the outside constraints that are coming in on the use of those funds. So we're also learning real-time about what we have in that works and doesn't work and what's viable. And it's really the economics that are driving the decision points. And rules that we can't control. You know, that's controlled by the Fed.
But to go hypervertically, would be a change.
Correct.
No.
No?
No, you could potentially, in those mixed-use, four mixed-use districts, that you could go seven stories. But you have to perform to go above four. Just like Carol's talking about, if you're doing, you're, you're building affordable housing within your project, you potentially could go up a story.
I had to read that first. That's definitely how I interpreted it.
Yeah, but there are, there, there's issues with that. And I thought Harold was going to say elevators, because generally, you go to four stories, you're putting in at least two elevators typically for ADA accessibility and that, that adds some price.
Well, in the fourth, when you tend to have the elevators in anyway under...
ADA.
The VACs of that...
UVACs.
UVAC standards, so that's... Now, where it could make sense is if you're in a, if you're building affordable into a market rate project and you're not connected to the federal funds, then that could be a viable solution for you. But if you're bringing it into a life tech project like we're using to, like we do, then it doesn't work. All the new ones, you're starting to see them.
About doesn't work. So the extra story, I, I picked this up in a conversation with you some time ago. Floor is a bad place, or the fifth is the bad place.
Correct.
Does it start working again if you go to seven?
If the economics change. You know, that's what you have to understand is that's where the pro forma will start telling you, you want a little work, it won't work based on the financial requirements that the lending, that the investors, the equity investors and the lending institutions. And so the pro forma will really guide that piece. We think that if they shifted, but we haven't done that calculation.
So is this something you're going to be...
Carol, if you go from four to five, does the construction type change? Aren't you then talking about pedestal?
You're talking about pedestals.
I know almost nothing about what I'm saying here.
Yeah.
That's what I've learned from developers, that at five stories, it's pedestal. If you, you do need elevators, it's more expensive construction. Is that, is that true?
That's generally true. And a good example is, look at ninth and Main Street. Yeah, they have concrete and steel, first floor. And then they're going wood frame above it. And that's typically what you would see on four stories.
Yes, and I think it depends on how you're designing the project. And so for us, elevators, what we're building for affordable, that's, that's just a given. And so we're, we're managing that within the pro forma, whether it's four or five. And so I think it's, it gets really project-specific and it's hard to say. But that's what we're learning through as we're doing this sort of housing journey.
All right. Now, I've got the, about to get the hook from sand, but I want to make sure there's enough time. So Councilman Yarborough brought up a great question a few months ago in, in preparation, he wanted us to bring this back about, does density and crime have a correlation related to each other? What I want to, I guess, suggest to, to council is when I take a look at our community, I have to look at public safety as a whole. Meaning, how does that pertain both to law enforcement? And how does that particularly pertain to fire services that we provide? And so one of the things I want to touch on, I'm actually going to talk about, just for a few minutes, the fire side of things. Because I think a lot of times, we forget that piece. But what I will tell you, anytime you increase the population, anytime your population grows, there is an increase in for public safety. So when we talk about that, whether we are responding to medical calls, which you did over seven thousand last year, whether it is responding to a domestic within a, a home or a residence. Again, those things happen when you bring folks in. Neighbors don't agree, barking dogs, things that we typically get called with of quality of life issues that may not necessarily be crime-related. And so when we talk about those things, I think it's important, not only to implement to the police, but also look at the fire side of things. Because with increased people, again, if you build a high-density local, location and it's all senior citizens, then we know that that particular area is going to have an increase in medical calls, more than likely than we would see in other areas. And so again, it's those types of things that we have to consider. As the city is transitioning or thinking of transitioning from more of a subdivision-style single-family home to high-density multifamily, we also have to begin to think about how are we going to protect the properties? So whether we're talking about UE, wildland, urban initiative, and how some of those things apply. If we're going to make roads smaller so that we can use more land space, then we have to think about how are we going to get emergency equipment down the roads? If there's on-street parking, how are we going to get the necessary things in there? And I will tell you that Glenn and his staff have worked with us, and Michelle Bowman, if you are familiar with her, she's our fire marshal, and her staff review every plan. And so there was conversations and have been continued conversations between us and Glenn and Joni and her staff, talking about as we begin to transition as a city to look at more opportunities to fill in and go up. What does that look like for first responders? And how does that public safety respond to those things? Whether it's looking at changing the types of fencing based on the study from the Marshall Fire, that I think it'll come out very soon. Are we looking at changing the requirements of the fencing so it's not wood and it doesn't spread the fire quickly? Do we need to go to other, some type of fire retarded fencing to try to save homes? What do we need to do? And so we begin to look at that. Again, the spacing between the buildings, what type of materials are we using? Because again, in the South, if you did, you know, multifamily housing or you did townhomes together, they're typically vinyl siding, right? We don't see that here. But again, one fire starts and it moves very quickly. So again, making sure we're using the right material. So it's a very, it's a very big conversation. And when you start talking about crime and you start talking about, well, if we build apartments, is it going to bring a bunch of crime? It's very hard to give you an exact answer because it depends on a lot of socio-economical issues related to an individual that may be living in a wife riding, whether it's a single-family home or it's an apartment. And so for an example, we may have, I pulled eight properties that we would classify as multifamily and looked at. And so you may see one area have more calls for service, but they're not generating very many reports. Right? It may very well simply be because the neighbor next door is playing their music too loud. So we knock on the door, we're like, hey, you might turn it down, thank you very much. It's not always crime-based every time we show up to a location. It is sometimes what we would classify as a simply quality of life issue. Maybe it's a parking issue in the apartment. Somebody's in their spot, right? Maybe it's because somebody's over the line. You know, they take up two spots. So a lot of the calls are the gift. But I want to put it in perspective because when we begin to look at some of our commercial properties, they have just as high call volume than some of our apartment complexes combined. And so I won't throw any retailers under the bus, but you could probably figure that out. And so again, when you look at it, it depends on, there's driving factors for each thing. So we, we have some, some multifamily housing gets more calls than less. But we also have some houses in subdivisions, get a lot more calls than everybody else. And so again, it's, it's a balance of those things. Now, what we are doing, and we have been doing for quite some time... Next slide. There we go. So we have been doing crime-free multi-housing. What this is and what this has been, this is an initiative that we work with, again, multiple or multi-housing residents. So whether it's apartment condos, whatever it is, we work with the management. This is something done through Dave Kennedy and Sarah Arnie, who are Neighborhood Resource Officers. And so they work with management. I think we hold a class once a quarter and there's usually thirty or forty folks in there. And what this does is create that piece... And what this does is create that piece between public safety and between management, to let them know what's going on in their building. What the challenges that we're having, what we're doing here is. We don't force them to do anything, but it gets them to let them know, hey, here's a problem in your area, here's what we're seeing, here's what we're dealing with, here's what we do. So those reports and those conversations are happening on a weekly basis, if not on a daily basis. Now what we also-
Zach, why don't you just time for one third second?
Oh.
That pays, we just wanna make sure it was, say goodbye.
Oh, okay.
Bye.
Sorry.
Totally shored me off now. I was a little wrong. So, so what it, what it does is allow management and public safety to work together. Now, if management decides to do something that's great, if they don't, that's fine too, but it lets them know, right? And again, a lot of it is quality of life issues, not necessarily crimes. And so again, having those conversations. Now, one of the other pieces that, that Longmont has kind of been very on the forefront, and I know Glenn and Sarah Arnie and Dave Kennedy have been having conversations, is as we begin to build more density, or multi-family locations, to make sure we use what's called crime prevention through environmental design, also known as SEPTED standards. What this does is, is, is essentially use the environment, and I made some examples. So again, department complex, you know what, you're required to put a temple or townhome on each arm. Eh, alarms, make sure they all have alarms, make sure that, there's fencing, make sure there's lighting. Again, make sure there's lighting in open spaces at dark time, right? It doesn't invite folks to hang out and linger in shadows. Again, eh, light makes people run away for some reason. So, that has been a piece that we have talked about with Glenn and Joni and their staff, about how do we get more of this into the code? So that as, as council and in planning zoning, and folks begin to make decisions on the direction of our community, how do we use some of the best practices that are out there nationwide in SEPTED that allow us to try to create a safe environment for individuals? So I know that's a lot, and I could probably talk for about forty-five more minutes on what we've got. But what I want to, I guess really what I hope that you take away is understanding that any time you increase population area, there, there's gonna be additional apartments of public safety. Traffic accidents, traffic, people living together, there's just a wide variety of things, medical calls, whatnot. But there are programs, and there are things that we are doing, and have been doing for quite some time, to build the relationships with, eh, those areas, and begin to build relationships. So for example, we have over four hundred properties documented in Longmont that are victims. We have over half of those are part of, eh, crime-free multi-family housing. Not required to be a part of it, but about fifty percent of those are already involved with us, and already getting the information they need on a daily basis to manage their communities, or that they have. So I know there's probably a lot of questions, so I will open it up. Okay. Whoever wants to go, for both of you raise your hand at the same time.
So, is this, eh, this crime prevention through environmental design, is this sort of what you're doing with some of our projects in regards to like the, we place laundry rooms and things like that?
It's a piece of it. What we're talking about on the laundry rooms is trauma-informed design based on type of individuals we're gonna be housing. But, we do do that, so Sarah's part of the housing authority. And, and so we are bringing SEPTED component on. So Chris and I have been changing fixtures, because there's a dark spot. And we all know what happens in a dark spot. So that's the kind of input that we get on these projects. So yes, but it's a little bit more than on the design of the laundry rooms.
And, and I think the best example I can give you is speed bumps, right? We get a lot of complaints, people speeding through a neighborhood, or speeding through, eh, eh, let's just say a carbon complex or a condo complex. Speed bumps force you to slow down. It doesn't require a law enforcement interaction, but the design itself requires an individual to either tear their car up, or actually slow down through that community.
Or just see a man in a parking lot not on the street.
So when I'm talking, when I say that, I mean like the entrance to, like, an apartment, you guys line through the development?
Yeah.
Again, putting those, those physical barriers, eh, doesn't allow that vehicle to ride through there at ninety miles an hour, which is what we do, oh, they're running, they're racing through here. But eh, what it does is forces us. So, so through design standards, you can mediate, or moderate, or control some of the future complaints that you might get based on driving habits. Yes, sir.
So, this is kind of the other side of the crime-free multi-housing coin. Because it worries me a little bit as, as an equity issue. I understand that, eh, especially for vulnerable populations, crime-free multi-housing is necessary for, for the safety of the people who live there. And yet, yesterday Harold said, be careful because people are losing their housing. And one of the reasons they lose their housing is because they have committed crimes. Where do they go? Because the last thing we want is people who have committed crimes but are not incarcerated be on the street. So, do we have a housing model that takes care of those people?
I think the model is really, no. I think the model is built on how do you do what you can to prevent that from ever occurring?
But it does.
And it does, because there are times you can't prevent that from occurring. And so when we look at the processes that we go through on the affordable housing side, it's exhaustive. And, and so when you hit that point, you have really gone through a litany of things that, where you've tried to work with the individuals, and it's just not changing. Now, on the other side of it, there is a piece where there are immediate issues that develop that are life safety related, that you have to deal with. Shooting someone in the unit. Threatening other people in, in complexes, breaking into the office. I mean, eh, eh, those are components that you just have to deal with, but I think it goes to what Zach's saying, and here's one. Eh, when we look at the call volume from the properties and the housing authority, and we compare it to what it used to look like, and what it looks like now, the call volumes is relatively different, in that it was not uncommon for us to see ten to fifteen calls per week at the suites. There are weeks we don't have any calls for service.
At the suites.
And we're, but we're seeing that uniform in all of our properties, and it is because if you don't do this, then it creates this.
And I understand all of those things, but what you're not saying is that that process, which makes the properties we manage safer and have fewer calls, also excludes some people. What I'm asking about is what happens to the people who are excluded?
Eh, I think it depends on the person.
Well, I'm telling you, I hear from the public, they are excluding these people when they are on the streets. And when I say Longmont helps people into housing, or Longmont helps people avoid losing their housing, Longmont also helps people out of housing, when they are difficult to live with, and-
Infringing on the rights of others and this.
And infringing on the rights of others, but they don't lose their rights when that happens. And so, I, I'm just, I think there's a gap. I think we need to have a way to house people. It's probably hard, difficult to house.
This probably leads, so this is a little long topic for what these, these folks are here to talk about, but it seems like what we're gonna be doing next, once we get through these two information pieces, is asking you what does success look like in each of these areas? So I would maybe hang on to that, because housing is next.
I just wanted to point it out at this point.
Yeah, I think you, there's a good point there. Does anyone have any questions for Glenn or for Zach about particularly the crime rate for density? I wanna make sure you have your questions answered.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you all, eh, answering this question to me, because we have heard this several times. I know I myself, and have heard that question, eh, about if we increase the density, eh, within a city of Longmont, that is going to increase the crime rate? And I wanted you all to have the opportunity to present that, let us know if it was yes or no. And, eh, because we don't wanna give false information, although we know that, you know, that it really didn't. And I appreciate the fact that just because the calls are being increased, eh, within the, the station, you know, people are hearing that, oh my gosh, you see the red lights going to the certain neighborhood. Those are, that doesn't mean it was a crime, it could have just been somebody, eh, playing the radio too loud, and the officer coming over, I don't know, but I appreciate you mentioning that, and also the fireside.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so that's very important too. And that we, we're dealing with the human race, we're dealing with people. So we can't control the choices that people make within their lives. All we can do is try to prevent, eh, what we can do in our own city, and within our departments. And I appreciate the fact of having the crime prevention through environmental design. And, I mean, I like the name of it too, that's pretty cool. But, eh, those are, are measurements that apartment complexes, complexes can take. Eh, people, eh, property owners can take these measurements, and like you said, you know more than half of are, are participating in the crime-free housing. That is key, you know? And so, understanding that we have these programs, eh, for our community, for those who own housing. And we're not saying it's going to work perfectly fine for you. We, we're not saying that, because we cannot control another human being, but we can put, eh, measurements in place. Though you can put measurements in place, eh, of like making sure you have airboats on, airboats on your house. Same thing. Eh, so, housing is needed in our, in our community. It does not cause increase of crime in our community. Eh, but it doesn't, because we have more people, there may be more issues, there may be more speeding, there may be more complaints in our community. So I just want people to think outside the box a little bit, and, eh, and, you know, contact our public safety department, contact our fire department to ask those questions, to get the facts. More so than spreading, eh, false information. And if we need to have a, you know, another conversation about this, I would, I would love to have another conversation with our community. But, you know, educating our community is very important, when we hear the same stuff over and over again, that's not true. And that's why I wanted to bring it up, 'cause I know that, that you all are doing, eh, a lot of work, and a very good job. So I just wanted to make sure that we put that out there.
I don't know if I'm missing, hang, hang on to that also, as a success measure, right? So when we get into housing and I ask what does success look like, right, educated people on the density of the site?
So what's the difference between crime rate and numbers of crimes?
You talking about specifically for Longmont?
Well, if we're gonna, as our pop, what I heard you say, and it's just as logical, as the population grows, there'll be more calls for a variety of things.
Sure.
Some of it crimes, some of it just nuisance kinds of things. So, I wouldn't, I, I don't think, should anybody should be surprised, as our population grows, there's gonna be more, there'll be more calls for a variety of things. That's different, it seems to me, a rate-
Yeah.
-is a calculation, right?
Right.
It's numbers of crimes per capita, numbers of crimes per automobiles, number of crimes per housing use. It's some metric, right?
Right.
So that's different-
Yes.
-than numbers of, just the frequency of calls.
Correct.
Eh, eh, 'cause it's conceivable in my mind, given what we're doing, we could have, eh, a, a growing population, and a growing number of calls, and a decreasing rate of actual crime rate. That would be an important statistic, or a metric for us to know when somebody says, you know, it's out of control, well, eh, we're, we're, we have a population that's, who should be surprised? But you understand the actual rate is going down.
And I-
If it is, I-
Yeah, and we can, we can, I can certainly get that to council, eh, for the twenty-twenty-two numbers for what we saw. Eh, but again, I think that, that's, there's, there's some confusion in those numbers too. Because if you look at crimes that we have here, it doesn't mean it's by everybody that lives here in the population of Longmont. So again, we can look at some of our past incidents that have occurred, that's made media attention, and we find out that those individuals don't live here. So again, when you start drilling into those numbers, you've got to begin specifically look at those types of incidents, because it can give you a skewed sense of what it is. And so for example, if you talk about motor vehicle theft, right? I know it's a hot topic, but we had an individual, we were arrested, I think it was fifteen times, over motor vehicle thefts. So again, it doesn't mean that fifteen people in our population were doing it, it's one individual. And so, again, we can certainly get you the data of what our crime rate looked like, eh, and get that for you. I'll have it with me now. Certainly get that to council, but again, I think you have to dive even deeper into just a, a crime rate, you know, thirty-two percent stolen motor vehicles, you know? Got to dive a little bit further, more into that, eh, than just the number itself. So, yes, sir, good question.
And then, that's a, that's a, I mean, too, that's part of SEPTED, right? Is, is if we engineer our full community to make fewer opportunities for people to come in here and commit crimes, that's part of the design to, right?
Correct, it is, it is correct.
So I wanna be real cognizant, we wanna get back to making sure that we understand the goal pieces before we, before we part ways today. Are you all comfortable moving on to talk a little bit about street naming? All right, thank you, Beth.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna invite Karma to come up and join us, because we have the one that we heard, it was a specific kind of request around research, was from Councilmember McQuay around the street naming process. Eh, and I'm invited Karma to come up and share a little bit about the equity work that we've been doing so far, particularly with respect to this topic. You can sit over there, we'd like to not have all those stuff. Anywhere, anywhere you wanna go, Karma. Anywhere you wanna go. Eh, talk a little bit about, eh, process, and I think the request came up with you, a task force in the process, and I think you, eh, and I, there's a little more context, we think you could probably benefit from, so.
So, Carmen Ramírez, Community and Neighborhood Resources, eh, thanks for allowing me to come forward on this conversation. So I wanna put a, a few things, just as background information, that I think will be helpful. Eh, wanna start off with, eh, my understanding in regards to the naming of Mount Evans has been postponed eh, due to giving additional tribal consultation. And what I will say on that is that what has been so important is, when it comes to renaming, eh, is consulting with the very communities that are impacted. And that those voices are the ones that are upfront, eh, in this. Eh, the last time that we did have a renaming, that was brought forward by community members out in the community. Eh, so if you recall, Shivington is now Sunrise, eh, but that came from a community group that brought that forward.
That lived on the street.
They did not live on the street. So, and that's an important, eh, piece to note, that it came from communities who did not live on the street. It then, eh, elevated to the point that we had to have a community-wide conversation, and then a neighbor conversation, and then assist the neighbors in understanding the importance of that name change. The why, and then assisting them with the how. So we helped with paying for postage to give out notice, well, they, first, they picked the name, because they live there. Eh, and then helping them with change of addresses. Everything from postage to, eh, community meetings to help them understand what do you need to do with the, as your street name is changing. So that technical logistical piece is what Community and Neighborhood Resources assisted with. So we have that, we are now at this point, but I wanted to start with something else. So I wanna start with our land acknowledgement. And when you hear this land acknowledgement, I'm, I think what the next step is to talk about actions, so. Eh, and this council is, is pretty much the council that, eh, adopted this land acknowledgement. So, we acknowledge that Longmont sits on the traditional territory of the Cheyenne, Arapaho Ute, and other indigenous people. We honor the history and the living and spiritual connection that the first people have with this land. It is our commitment to face the injustices that happened when the land was taken, and to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children, to ensure that these injustices do not happen again. When I read this out wherever I'm at, I immediately then go to the action, because we don't want this statement to be a token statement. It is a living, eh, statement. And so the way that we have brought life to this and created action, eh, one started with our relationship with the Northern Arapaho. I took several years to build that relationship. Eh, I never would have imagined that I would be in a sweat lodge with Council Mayor Burris and the mayor. That, and, and especially for me, because that's a very private part of my life, and now- And now I've got council in a sweat lodge. Um, so, but what it really hinged on was building relationships, getting to know one another, understanding the injustices that happen, and where do we create them? So the first youth exchange that we did, uh, before we do any youth exchange for the youth and for the parents and the chaperones, we go through what is called the doctrine of discovery. So we go through an exercise that shows the students and the parents and those that are, are, uh, chaperoning, what that means and what that history is. But what I hear in a lot of Native communities is that we are not gone, we are not a part of history, or we are here. And if you'll see in our museum, we have this exhibit, I hope everybody gets to see it, it's called Duality. And it's that mixture of contemporary and traditional. There's a piece in there regarding boarding schools. We did a lot of education with the first council around the story of Northern Arapaho and Cheyenne and how the division happened and how they were moved, right? We also did a lot of education around, um, boarding schools for council and for community members. We also did a lot of education around a film called Two Rivers. And Two Rivers was a community that said, "Well, I moved here, but I think there might have been other people here before me. Who are they, where are they, and how do we rebuild relationships?" And rebuilding of the relationships has been key. So when I see this, I laminated this because it has a land acknowledgement and it has a picture of the first youth that came down. All 10 of them stayed at my house because we had to understand that I could not do a traditional where you, uh, send them out to a home, right? Many of the kids have never left the reservation, I'm not gonna put them in a home where they don't know. Okay, so we, we've progressed, our youth go up there. So just as we saw with Sister Cities, our youth are going to Japan, to Mexico, to Northern Arapaho. But not only our youth, we have community members that have formed that. I think Dr. Waters took a ride up to Northern Arapaho's, up to Wind River, to meet and talk to people, to hear stories. Uh, we have a meeting next week, uh, set with, uh, business council members to talk about open space and what are opportunities. All of these are initial conversations because we want to be careful to, uh, tend to the relationship and to be culturally appropriate and sensitive, right? It's, it's a heavy conversation. If you haven't seen, we have a little documentary, a little documentary-
Called Little by Little.
And it tells the story. More importantly, that same month during Native American, uh, month, we did a series, a series of films. But we also brought in people from Northern Arapaho to have a conversation. And I think Dr. Waters recalls one of the things that my husband-
Beautiful.
Do you want to share that?
Well, Ray was sharing, he was in North Carolina, as I recall.
Yes.
And there was a panel, uh, that included leadership from this, a tribe there. And the topic of reparations came up.
Yes.
And, um, there was an audience member, as I recall the story, who reacted to the idea of reparations, saying, you know, "I'm not responsible for what my grandfather did or my father did."
Right.
"Don't hold me accountable." And Ray's description of, of a leader, right, of this indigenous-
Chief Moon.
Sitting on his face, said, "You know, I would never hold you accountable. If your grandfather or your father stole a horse from my family, I would hold you accountable unless you still have the horse." Uh, pretty powerful statement.
So I think we are looking at opportunities on a one-on-one to relationship build, to bring in and make visible communities of color. We do that in different fashions, but we're really working on that. And sometimes what happens is that that good stuff that happens isn't necessarily known by everybody. Uh, but we also want to be, um, mindful of investing to create that consciousness so that it is at a higher level. Uh, I will tell you that to this day, we used to have an, an event called Inclusive Communities that highlighted 15 different, like about 15 different cultural groups, local. We had our African-American community, our Chinese, our Nepalese, our Native American community, our Sami community. Uh, believe it or not, we got a couple folks that are Samis. And we would bring them forward to this. And so I'm mentioning all this because I think it's important in your conversation to be mindful of where do we invest to raise that community consciousness? Where do we invest to continue to have challenging conversations? Longmont Multicultural Action Committee has worked on, uh, last year, a Voices of Change. Uh, and they brought through, and they had, we had, um, a Voices of Change panel on hate crimes. And we had someone from the NAACP, and now Boulder, the OBTQ community, and the DA's office, as well as one on the Latino community, and then one on the Native American community. Those continuations, um, I think are really helpful in that raising of consciousness. But I also think that it is, uh, you as leaders, those steps that you want to take uh, in regards to whether it's retribution or whether it's consciousness raising, um, I will leave that in your hands to discuss, but I thought this information might be helpful, so.
Ed, do you have a recommendation for us on this particular question, Councilmember McCoy? Does it make more sense to take this as part of the relationship building with the Northern Arapaho tribe or Multicultural Action Committee? Is there a recommendation that you have for the council?
Well, and, and I'm biased.
Aren't we all?
I'm biased because I really, uh, believe that the work that we're doing through Sister Cities and the work that we're doing through the Multicultural Action Committee has a potential to reach that education to- And when we talk about education, um, how to really be authentic of being, telling the true story, right? And whose story, and who gets to be the storyteller? So when we meet with Northern Arapaho about open space, we want them to be the ones telling the story. That means the good and the bad. Um, I recently had a conversation about Sandstone and what story is told there on Sand Creek. It's only one version. So we're gonna work with them to tell another one. So I think it's, it's a choice. Um, do you want to take on this issue? Or do you want to invest in other ways where we can continually raise that consciousness and that education? Given that it is very hard to reach the whole community, right? Uh, so, uh, but I think it also is important in that recognition of why names are changing. Uh, there's an article that, that was circulating regarding the, um, the state taking a pause and, and going back. But I wanted to call out something else in that article of some name changes that happened because this is not just a Native American issue. Uh, there used to be, uh, a place called Negro Creek and Negro Mesa's, right? Don't even know, didn't even know, right? It's been changed to, um, Clay Creek and Clay Mesa. There are communities that still have sundown laws, right? So there is an important piece to that as to looking back at names, places, as well as policies and laws that, that maybe, uh, were, were placed there for a very specific, to be derogatory, uh, to limit access, uh, those kinds of things. So I will leave that conversation as, and I'm biased that the community work that we're doing in bridge, building bridges. Um, I had a young man who was here today when Ciudad Guzmán came. Uh, we brought in, um, folks from Northern Arapaho to do a TP raising. Uh, we had frieble, uh, and we also, um, had a, a film on buffalo. And it's a young man from here. Uh, a young white man who came up to me and was kind of cheerful and thanked us for giving him the opportunity. As he said, "I would never have had this opportunity." And then having young people, and I think Dr. Waters and Suzie were in the council chambers when our Longmont youth and our Northern Arapaho youth took over the council chambers. Uh, they became council. And I, I won't say, but they voted on, um, building dorm rooms for the youth center and the swimming pool, right?
Yes.
So they already gave you direction on, on what their needs were. Uh, so I will tell you that, um, since we've started this, um, Sister Cities hired a Northern Arapaho young woman to be, uh, their summer intern during, uh, last summer. Um, I frequently have people stay at my house because this is a, a place where they feel welcome and they feel at home. I think that piece of, um, Elise Funhunter said this when we did the signing for the Northern Arapaho. He said, "I've heard stories of my homeland." I am, I'm not gonna say his age, but he's older. And he said, "I have never been to Estes, and I've heard stories." Dr. Waters remembers, "I heard stories of why we came through here, right? And to feel welcome and to feel like we can enter into a conversation, a present-day conversation, not a past-day conversation." But I also think it's important to, uh, fix those mistakes from the past too, at some point. So I know I didn't answer the question.
Fair enough. I appreciate your wisdom, Carmen. So, so I want to be really cognizant of the time. We have an hour left, I know we've got a couple of year-round activities here. We have an hour left, we've got four goals that we would like to, um, talk about what the success will look like to kind of finish out today. Um, is there more conversation you'd like to have about the-
I just have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Carmen, I really do appreciate that. And, and the purpose of bringing this up is that, uh, I think we should, as a community, be cognizant of, of, uh, when, uh, there are efforts to make a change, like we're seeing with Mount Evans, uh, to not be tone deaf to the situation. Uh, and, uh, and it's not just the, the Northern Arapaho. You know, I, I think of people like my, uh, my wife's sister's husband, her, uh, his mother was, uh, grew up in a German camp, uh, not here, but in, uh, California. You know, we have another relationship with, uh, Japan, but, you know, I'm not proposing in any stretch of the imagination going through and looking at, uh, changing every, uh, thing. I think it's a good thing to have this practice in place. Doc, with Carmen, looks like they, uh, they now put these things, uh, names of streets when we do, uh, new development. I think there's, there's room in there for maybe that group to consider looking at this as well. Uh, and I just think that, uh, we, we certainly don't want to, uh, with the, the community where we're talking about sustainability and safety and all these other aspects, not address that, that point. And so, uh, I think there's, you know, you've got an historic preservation commission, we've got, uh, you know, uh, you know, these other community groups that can do some of this work here, uh, and we can feel it out to them. And it wouldn't be that big of a, a challenge for them to help move this forward. But I also think that you don't have to live on the street to, uh, to feel slight, wronged, or ahead of grievance. And so I think that it's, uh, it's, uh, set in the right direction, it's, it's progressive in the sense of, uh, of respecting others. And so I think it's something that we should consider, uh, doing. And it's, uh, I just, uh, you know, when I hear members of the public that are against it, it really is, I, I think it's a, it's a tone deafness to the realities of how people would feel. And so we have to be conscious of these things.
As a city, it certainly makes sense, I think, for us to follow the state lead, particularly Mount Evans as a specific one, single topic. But perhaps relying on the Longmont Multicultural Action Committee, bringing this up, if this is a concern that the council has, that may be a, a better way than creating a separate task force.
Absolutely. And then maybe the limitations to what we're, we're on, maybe they're limited to the various characters out there, but maybe not, uh, presidents, uh, things like that. I don't know, half of what our parameters would be, but, you know, we can talk amongst themselves about what that looks like.
You guys want to go down and-
Yeah. Um, I, I think it's always good to hear, have conversations like this. Many of us don't know about the names in the city, but if someone has, brings it up, it's worth a conversation and exploring. And if the person that brings it up wants to do, you know, because it is their issue to begin with, sorry, each other, um, to do some research and help us along, um, how does that relate to Colorado and Longmont in particular? Or does it, or get the conversation started, it'll be a long road. And again, looking at our base level of services, I, I don't think this is something that, you know, staff should be put on. But, um, LMAC, um, would be a good place to start to cover it up, so just start a consultation, exactly.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I support that. That is what I-
So we, uh, going forward, um, look, this, we're, this is in the basket, in basket for LMAC or if there are community groups or, this is not something that we're gonna move forward with, is that where we are?
That's what I'm thinking right now, screw them. Not that you would give a community group-
Yeah.
-a donation or something.
I think what I heard Carmen said, she said a number of things that we're thinking about. But among them is to be real mindful, but not, as we're building a relationship, to be really careful when we don't do something in, in the interest of doing good that has an unintended consequence, that, that has an effect on the larger relationship we're building after. I think that's part of what I think.
That's what I heard.
Which is good guidance, Sam, I like your words. Your words were good.
Good words.
Thank you.
If LMAC doesn't want to take it on, then LMAC doesn't take it on, for like, it would just be, yeah.
So my question would be, what would you like to ask LMAC? Uh, we, we currently are gonna start a very small kind of, uh, needs assessment around our cultural communities and issues that are happening in the community. But if you were, how do I state the question to LMAC?
Are you interested in researching this, um, name of, of Evans and how it's related? And how it relates to, um, Colorado? There may be somebody on the LMAC board that individually would be interested, but that's all I would ask. And if they say you don't do it, Evan would-
Asking for consultation, what, what is LMAC recommend for the city council?
And how would they rank that as far as their priorities? Exactly, really needs to be done.
Exactly, but it doesn't-
Yes.
Carmen, it seems to me that what you, what LMAC is already doing is, is having the awareness of the cultures who they are communities. And when what done looks like there is, is that the community says, "Oh, this in our community isn't sensitive, let's change it," rather than us imposing it on the community, as it happened before. And so I, I think that, well, we, the public, not necessarily the council, but the public needs to get more behind LMAC and support their events and donate and, you know, all that stuff to enable them to, to do their multicultural outreach in our city now that in terms of the approach they're taking, some may like, like approach.
So let's do a real fast thumbs up and thumbs down if you want to ask LMAC, if they're interested in, um, pursuing, pursuing a, a discussion, you know?
And would Councilman McCoy want to come and-
Sure. Send it in.
They're meeting the second Monday of every month at the New Year's Day, so I know that wouldn't work, but we could figure out a way around it. And I wanna, I wanna just very quickly, uh, tell you about how things like that got initiated. So, uh, many, many, well, everybody here knows that the largest day of the day in the state of Colorado is here in Longmont. So we had the largest-
Day of the Dead.
Largest Day of the Dead celebration. So we had the largest, largest day of the dead celebration. Does everybody know what question was asked that started it? So our former museum director who's passed away, Martha Clevenger, asked the question as to why do Latinos not come to the museum? And we gathered a group of Latinos and we asked that question and they said, "We didn't know we were welcomed. And what do you have that would be meaningful and attract us?" And we created the Day of the Dead. And that became more and more and bigger, right? Much like inclusive communities, we've outgrown all of our facilities. Sometimes those questions are really helpful to us finding a way to really highlight our communities of color, DLT community as an asset in our community and not that deficit less. So I pointed that out. Cinco de Mayo is the only celebration in the state of Colorado where there is no alcohol and no tobacco. It is family oriented. We don't know those historical pieces that also created change or those historical stories that also, inclusive communities started because there was a group of folks that felt that council, our decision makers, did not see our communities of color. So we brought them into the Civic Center Mall. And when the Tongans and the Palauvians were having a dance off and no one wanted to go into city council meeting, city council said, "Well, I think we should find another place." But the interactions, the relationships that happen, I think, are very important. Everybody knows Rita Lu and the amazing work that she has done around Chinese New Year's. So I think those relationships are key.
Thank you.
Okay, the master engineer is back. You have four main areas and our question is, what does success look like? So shall we start with housing? Is that your most important topic? Throw them at me. What does success look like to you all when you have achieved housing?
I have one. Yes, that the people who work here can afford to live here. That if they so choose to live here, I'm thinking about our teachers, our police department, our staff. Anyone who's willing to.
What else?
When we have no more safe lots.
Because there are no longer.
Yep.
Okay. I'm assuming.
Right. Because there are no longer.
What else? What does success look like?
Does that mean that there is always a vacancy when someone needs it? Because that's what no more safe lots would mean.
Would that be a subwool?
Well, the safe lots are people who live and work here.
So it tags along with what Suzie's saying, that's the people.
Sure. No, but I mean, if we have no more safe lots, with what safe lots are usually short transitions, but somebody falls out of their housing and, and they can be rehomed pretty quickly. Is, is, when you say no more safe lots, does that mean that there are enough units that there's always a vacancy?
I would suggest enough units. But if you want there to always be a vacancy, there's also this balance of trying to make sure that you don't have too many vacancies.
Yes, yes, but there are always vacancies. How about not just in the LHA, but in all the communities, there are always vacancies.
Marsha, there are enough units for those who need them. What else?
It's not, probably not about numbers of units. Certainly, I would salute what's up there. God, it's somehow, for me, success would be living in a community less characterized by unions. And I don't know, you know, how much, how responsible we are or can be for, you know, bending or altering, you know, that perception. But Harold, I think in one of your slides yesterday, you had a, you used the other acronym of, not NIMBY, but YIMBY. Please in my diner. Somehow we could, you know, alter that.
That was actually Glenn's inspirational goal.
I saw it somewhere and I got my attention, that we could. We want to have some influence on it. I know we can't, you know, own it or we, you know, people aren't gonna change their minds till they change their hearts. But somehow, we gotta figure out how to address that. Maybe it's just basic economics, that, you know, the fear that people have, that a different kind of housing unit in my neighborhood somehow is gonna diminish my housing value, which I don't think there's any evidence for.
The crime stuff.
Or it's the crime issue.
Where council, where council plays in this, can you go, what do we need from you? I think in the last community conversation, or not, the last copy of council, I believe it was Mayor Beck and Councilmember Yarborough that were at that and they were hearing this. And I think when you talked about that, they said, "We need housing and here's why we need housing." Because of these issues. And I think there was really kind of that point of digging into that topic, I guess, in my backyard by saying, "Here's what we need." And so I think those are examples to say, "Well, how do we handle it? And what do we, I think that's what we need to talk about." So I think there's a way to incorporate that in.
Well, it does seem to, for me, to be something that the council can have in some impact.
Helped by. There's a matter of mobility. So as people move through their lives, where they need to live, change, changes. I hear, because of being on the senior advisory board, there's people trapped in their big houses and they either have the ability to downsize because the stock doesn't exist or because it's so, it's as expensive as their house, you know? And nor do they have the ability to make their house more accessible that would allow them to stay there. So that's, it's, it's a nuance, but it is also a co-related thing. You know, how do you, the, how do you make your upper story into a, you, and how do you find the money to do that so that you can still live on the bottom? There's all kinds of, of real, there are barriers that we don't know we have in our code because doing those things is so expensive.
It's a great point. We almost need to layer in that lifecycle journey and journey map. New home buyers to this point maximize your, yeah, needs and then I think that's a good way to think about it.
So Marsha, I characterize that as housing is accessible and flexible for various stages of life.
Everybody who wants to move up or down can.
Any other ones on housing?
I think we're building as fast as we can.
So, the only other question we had, and it's something we heard from Chiquio yesterday. In the first slide that Glenn put up, he had two, the two excerpts from the code speak to, I think, the missing middle that we were, that we've talked about before. I guess if I had a better understanding of what percentage of new housing stock that's either proposed or under development would fit the category missing middle. As if there's anything we're doing with code, because in the light of mind, that would be a question I would have. Is there anything we have to do with code that would enable or incent or signal that we, that we'd like to see one of the missing middle developments?
So yeah, we can answer it. Valerie has it.
Do that and light up. I have a whole lot of slides.
There's a lot of code work to do because I think you said today, is there anything coming in in housing stock that would fall into attainable, pocket for sale? Be attainable? I mean, I think the closest project that I've seen was some townhome duplex off of 66 and Alpine. And while the, I did go into it, by the way. While they say from the 500s, the reality was it was 650, I think was the lower end of some of it. And so I don't, I mean, I think we're starting to see some of it come in a little bit or we think it may come in, but the economics are really driving that. We see zero for sale affordable outside of what habitat or demand is doing.
We had the presentation a couple of years ago from Insulting Hightower. It was all about the missing middle. It was a good presentation. And we identified everything from street foots to sidewalk foots to tree, numbers of trees, you know, and building materials, neighborhood character, all those things that would have shown up in code. But we've never gone back to it, that I recall, we've never had a follow-on conversation. I don't want to get into these issues.
Well, no, because I was the money director then.
It is.
So I believe council did not direct us to move forward with several of those things. So missing middle would be a lot of things, right?
It's a direction.
Yeah, and you know, it could be as simple as, you know, do you allow two AUs per lot? And you, you know, do you allow more duplex, triplex? I think some of those, while we've changed our code and have loosened up what the standards are between attached single family and detached single family, I think we have a lot of NIMBY around those types of things in existing single family neighborhoods. We are predominantly floor unit per acre density community, right? So that shift of that kind of housing, I think, is absolutely on board. But it's gonna, it's gonna take some.
I took this down the rabbit hole a lot of times. So the success indicator would be that if we could calculate percentages of new housing stock that fit particular category, we could mark improvements in that type of housing stock over the next five years or 10 years or whatever.
Part of what's gonna come out of this, as you can see, this is what we were working on the last couple of years. You all approved the price calculations. You all gave us direction on the securities. The housing assessment that's coming in is something that I think will inform some of this. I'm starting to see the preliminary numbers, shocking, just on the rental side for short. And that's the piece that I don't inform, I think, saying the basis of how we're preparing and what we're doing. And I think it's your, and you can see some of these other code changes that are associated with it. How the attainable fee waiver, that's what you all have directed us to do. That's gonna be coming on April 4th. That's what took a long time to figure out, the deed restrictions associated with it and then the design standards to allow more flexibility with utility setbacks because the way we're gonna work ourselves through this housing piece, and I think Councilmember Riker has just talked about this, is this. Because the model that we have in our single family structure will not produce attainable and affordable homes. And so we're having to look at, how do we maximize density to really hit those for sale products so that you can actually have a wealth generation component to this? Because if people are homeless, granted, there's no wealth generation and you keep people in cycles. As you're thinking of what does success look like? I think there's another indicator that, you know, I would throw out is, you know, maybe, and we can work on this. But what I told you all yesterday about housing is, I think, how we communicate it to our residents is really important because we have a housing crisis that will become a financial crisis and an economic development crisis as we can't hire people and when they can live in our communities. And at times, it can become an operational crisis. So if we have to continue to relook at our boundaries to where our operations staff can live with response times and we have to keep pushing that further out, there is a tangible impact of the service we provide to the community. And it's not just us, it's the schools and it's the employer base. And as I said yesterday, the ultimate risk is people can't hire their employees to work in these places and then they end up having to make other decisions, which then creates a spin cycle that you see in cities all the time. Can we look at the Midwest and see where they suffered through that? So kind of rehashing some things to have you all think about what does success look like? You know, let's back out to like 30, what does success look like?
Is that question on the table? Because I don't know whether we do it with demonstration neighborhoods or highlighting the demonstration neighborhoods that we already have, like La Cumbia Vista, which is so gorgeous in the summertime, you know? But we need acceptance, you know? We don't need, "Nice, lovely townhome developments at Home Farm and at Champion Greens and the resistance is astounding." We need to do something to obtain acceptance. And I think some model PUTs in the areas of change. You know, I just talked, Taylor's not here now, but we also talked to a journalist from The Guardian who is using, writing about prospect and why it is both a perfect and imperfect example of urbanism and why it didn't change the culture of the community, or at least I hope that's what she writes about. But, but we do model communities that, I know, this is gonna be a lot of work, right? But that, but, but there need to be ways to change the public attitude about density and seeing how wonderful a community that is more dense, more walkable, more varied can actually be.
I was just gonna say, in a certain concept, you can only do that by actually building it in the sense that, remember Aldo Pushback rounds, Roosevelt Park apartments, right? And then now nobody bats an eye when they go live, right? And I think it's the same thing. Change is scary for a lot of people, but once it happens, they tend to adapt to it. The adaptability of the human, you know, of humans is, is pretty remarkable once they're facing with it. And so sometimes you just gotta make hard decisions and put the things right.
So do you know what you need? I think so. Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
So?
Early childhood, what does success look like? Is it childhood or childcare? Well, I've always seen this, this is Harold's.
Early childhood, which would include.
Carefree. Yeah, the way I've always heard it is early childhood care and education. Does that seem appropriate?
Actually, it's for Fat Barfords, frequently, early care and education.
Success looks like?
Every student, at least within our city, well, it's to the degree that parents want them in a placed, are placed in an environment that is development appropriate, affordable, accessible. In high quality. I should probably add zero to five.
Okay, zero, and zero to five, because we did have this as three to four.
Right.
Yeah, so every.
The child.
The child, yeah. Zero to five.
Can, can we get the neighborhood aspect of it in there somewhere? We should be able to, we should be able to build like a, a location where it's not there. It's just like a food desert.
Part of what we're looking at is childcare deserts. So there's no childcare deserts. Part of what we're looking at is childcare deserts, so there's no childcare deserts.
That's part of the accessible and affordable, you wanna say about child and accessible.
Yeah, you know, when, when, when you're a parent who has to work, you want your kid to either be close to home or close to work. You don't wanna have to drive twenty-five minutes if your kid has fallen on their head nearby.
Do whatever that is.
Work.
I'll do a real quick duplicate of this slide.
It's getting real tiny.
Which is. My problem and not yours. What else?
Well, I just maybe.
That may be it.
Every, every five-year-old at least living within the city limits alone, I wish we could expand that to at least the same grade value school as for arrives in kindergarten school ready.
You don't know ready to put visions or, you know, any other cities.
I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Yeah, he said mom, mom.
I like.
Very quiet. No, oh, I thought you was left, sorry.
I like to, I'm, well, I.
Okay, got it. Already for kindergarten. Right? Did I catch it?
Arrive, school ready?
Yeah, arriving at kindergarten, school ready.
Our school ready. Arrive at kindergarten.
School ready.
School ready. I don't think you should put five-year-old there, because my four-year-old grandson's going kindergarten. I mean, I don't wish for a lot of.
So every incoming kindergartner?
Yes.
Yeah. Ready kindergarten.
So one more.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
Now you can, you can take arrive and.
Arrive.
Arrive.
Any other ones for this one?
Say amen.
Amen.
I was gonna give you an amen earlier. Just keep that appro- inappropriate in the moment.
I'll always take the amen. Transportation. Christina. Transportation. And, you know, I would argue on your vision, you're talking about mobility, you're talking about, you know, more than one type of transportation. So what does success look like?
Thanks for saying those.
All the mode of transportation accessibility.
For all residents, for all. For all. Mobility for all.
Mobility.
Yeah, I think that's removal. Almost.
I think, I'm sure the other council members probably got, uh, straight up emails all similar.
Hang on here, I wanna make sure everyone did it yet. Yeah, okay, good.
I think most of the council members probably also got emails in the last day or two that were all specific to connectivity issues. Where, yes, we have bike infrastructure here, but it doesn't connect anywhere, right? And so I would think that connectivity is built out, or, or something along those lines. You know, arts, full connectivity is, is built, something along those lines, not successful to spend on that whole thing.
Do you think.
You think.
Think it's full connected, or do you think it should be?
Did you say it quits it?
No. Well, I tend to like it to, I, I, I tend to think that we wanna keep it at the level of, of, uh, of some of our community members that might not understand that term. Uh, I, I understand that if, you know, meaning of, I think that it's not not. Reprise that.
Complete connectivity and transportation.
I don't like that sentence, because there it's not just bike or an animal or whatever.
But you wanna talk about safety too, you wanna talk about how that zero.
Zero.
Mission zero for concepts in regards to, uh, so that people feel like they can get out there, that they can price, they can, uh, you know, especially at busy street or on Main Street or whatnot. Uh, and that, so that they don't have to take the life into their own hands.
Unlikely, but the goal is zero crashes, right?
Yes.
So if we had zero crashes, that would be success.
Well, we talked about zero fatalities, zero severe crashes.
Severe crashes.
Yeah, we, we understand that there's gonna be accidents and crashes, right?
And vision zero also prioritizes pedestrians.
Yeah.
It's also safe to be, you know, good, whether it's realistic or not, aspire to not have, you know, die as a result of traffic erosion.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was zero traffic fatalities for any truck, yes, I agree.
That's what I was gonna.
Because prioritizing pedestrians doesn't get cyclists or.
No, no, but I think it's put a higher up on the, you know, the, 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 the traffic.
Right, switching, we were talking about with the transportation ability plan that we wanna get going in the next couple of months here, really. It's flipping the narrative, so we're really talking about pedestrians first, bicycles second, transit riders.
Okay.
Not necessarily for second or third, but aspire to have that at a higher level of, of, of focus. And always focusing on, on, on traffic, traffic, cars.
I think it's moving from a car-centric focus, just to.
And you would. It's, you can manage without a car. You know, the, the, the city welcomes people without personal people ownership.
Well, it's like, it's not a requirement that, that should be, to your point.
Gotcha.
I mean, that puts money back to people's pockets in some different ways, just.
Right, running a car and not a apartment. It's twelve thousand dollars a year without the payment.
You've got insurance.
Yes. Yeah, insurance paid.
You know, another interesting goal of transportation, I'm gonna interject myself a little bit, is, uh, this, you're gonna see some of that. Trans- transportation, the transportation system facilitating affordable and attainable housing. Because I think we often forget about that, but a robust transportation system will facilitate just that housing.
Yeah, we have, we have some developments now that, that are that left town sort of winding, sort of streets that are so difficult to get insert external transportation out that it's, uh, uh, was really cool looking and, and edgy at the time when we were putting it in, but completely disconnected to the reality of getting people from point A to point B without using a car.
That's very insightful. Okay, one more. Everybody all right? Give me a thumbs up if we're good.
It's good, thank you.
Come on back. States. In some extent, implement the plan, right? But you need to hear mine about that. Or seize the opportunity. The other thing that occurred to me was council member waters in this particular section mentioned the idea of being able to take, seize the opportunities as I come up with this area.
Um, you know, so on our Main Street, are we specifically to the downtown area? Or are we talking about the extension?
You also.
Okay, because I, yeah.
Okay, this brings me up to a, a thing that's kind of how we, uh, move it. Is sometimes we get suggestions of what Longmont should get from Dr. Dogg in regards to the sort of industry that comes in and that sort of thing. And it always felt like it was kind of like, hey, I think you guys should give that, that stuff. But, you know, what might have been cool or maybe diversify our, our employment base was kind of sometimes the, looked over. And it just kind of, it's one of those things that I was just kind of, but, you know, second back, my mind is kind of the issue that when you say seize opportunities, how, I mean, because sometimes, like you mentioned today about having that, uh, a group that you should sit, you should come in and relocate here and everything. But, you know, are we, are we, are we attracting those, those diverse businesses? You know, or seizing opportunities, how?
So, so your point is not only seize the opportunities, they present themselves, but also work actively work to attract opportunities?
Yeah.
I guess, uh, to that point, you know, there's, to your point about Dr. Dogg, this makes me laugh a little bit, is that recently, and I would say in the past year and a half, there's a lot of pushback with Dr. Dogg and the directors of some of the things that they bring up. Because as we all individually look at municipalities and overall vision of Dr. Dogg doesn't fit, so, um, a, a lot of it. So not only actively work to attract opportunities, but opportunities that we want in our city, not just anything that's a lot. Well, I think you have some vision plans that maybe could help with the Main Street quarter, that plan is.
Well, for me, I know we had entertainment and all of that, um, when I went, visited the high schools and whatnot, and I, we all know that the youth want something that's fun. And it would be really nice that if we can have something, um, with the youth in mind. Where we can have our younger generation that will also, uh, utilize that space to be proud of.
I have to, I'm gonna go a little further on that.
Yeah.
That keeps our youth in our city. I mean, many of them go to other cities, so it would be not just you. Educate ourselves on what, I don't know how to say it, but, um, up to date, like, like your product gaming, uh, because that is the new thing that kids want.
Well, it doesn't have to be just kids, I mean, younger adults too. I mean, younger adults go to different, because it's not here, it is nothing to do here.
Sure.
You know, that, I never felt this.
She's still about herself.
And that's actually, that's an economic development thing too.
Yeah, it's kind of like those movies in the park, you know, that, and that sort of thing, like, could you make a, uh, an area that was almost like a drive-in movie theater for gaming, sort of aspects, certain aspects of the, certain nights of the year that would be, show everyone, well, we can maybe have a gaming, uh, aspect outdoors for next year, uh, and kind of make that worth to fit here.
The, both two and three for me imply a real proactive approach on part of city staff. Um, in, in this list of, of, this part of the list of areas, because there are others that love this. Uh, this seemed, it just feels like this one, as much as I love the work we've done, ought to be more opportunistic as opposed to pro act or responsive. But, but, but there's some work required to draw something to which you can respond, which would be a real clear, crisp, compelling vision of possibilities in this part of town. It's not like, maybe there, maybe it's like we're intent to develop that kind of vision, and we've got a head start on it. Um, but, but if we're gonna list two and three, that has, that's where we're gonna measure progress. Then a year from now, you know, there ought to be some accountability, so how did we promote it, who did we promote to? And I'm just not certain that that's where we need to put you right now in, as staff.
I would feel like number three, you sort of acted on last time by asking the services to, you know, make recommendations around.
Yeah.
They didn't, which I think fits right into that. So, um, how is the recorder team doing? How is the collective impact recorder team doing? Maybe the council needs, uh, a readout from them before, uh, maybe the, before we codify that floor point completely? So maybe this is work with L E P.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, because L E P knows what council is looking for. And rather than just, um, work commercial places for people to work, like, I mean, we've got spunkers and working Costco. Can we also have a different vision that L E P would prioritize on the floor?
Yeah, right, does that help that?
Yeah. So, uh, success for me, especially with Main Street, not here, it's oftentimes, because the east side, I don't know if you get some from north, about North Main. Or two side. You're turning in equal amounts as I do. Um, you know, that, all sections of Main Street are, you know, that have robust economic opportunities, businesses and vitality. I, I would do, you know, do your, run your magic on those words. But, uh, I, you know, I would like to see that all, all areas are given equal attention to.
And do you mean that you would want to approach that for the additional taxation that's the downtown, downtown house?
You know, so, I mean, it could be, you know, we're exploring area of an uptown authority, you know, that's something Harold and I had.
Yeah, so Joey's talking about this, I think, you know, I'm gonna latch on to comments you all made about our others to do it. But maybe we reach out to the chamber.
Yeah.
And ask the chamber to really be that initiative with the businesses on North Main Street to, to look at the creation of the general improvement district or something. So that we can have the same funding sources. It's a time set, I mean, if, if we do it, then it's the same people that are doing housing.
Yeah, yeah, no, but there are other people we can engage with to have them take the lead. Absolutely, merchants need to take the lead.
Yeah.
Chamber could guide. Facilitate that, because I think when I talk to business owners, a lot of it is they don't know how.
That's right.
They don't have time, so if they have somebody who's facilitating that and leading the way, I think a lot of people get on.
Yeah, they yell at me because downtown's in the work, it's whitey little downtown. Downtown gave us.
That's what I had to explain to them.
So could we just add in there also the Latino chamber? Because there's that section of Ninth Avenue there that has such a strong grouping of, of, you know, owned businesses that it just seems like such a logical spot to have, have that really developed in such a strong.
You know, one of the challenges of North Main is the number of, of businesses that are in buildings owned by landlords someplace else. Be contrasted down.
Yes, yeah.
It was the property owners down there that voted, they created the district and voted, right, to, to tax themselves. In uptown, uh, that's gonna require landowners who are not business owners. I mean, that's, that's the tension of, of, of North Main. Um, now, I, there, you know, I was in a conversation once with folks about where to start with that, maybe in terms of a, a co-op, in terms of purchasing maintenance facility, cost of, mysterious sorts. As a way to test the ideas. Um, that, that, that is where maybe L D, maybe the chamber could, uh, just, to just see what's possible. But I know that the ownership issues are so different from uptown.
But maybe we could get one of our local banks to, or put together an investment plan that, that would persuade both the tenants and the landlords to somehow come up with, with a solution, or would enable them to. And?
Not a word.
Oh. Sorry.
Well, I think we certainly start anymore, I think would be a little hard to, to manage.
So my proposal is for you to rely on your CEO now to bring back goals and metrics that would follow along with these desires.
I thought he had too much to do.
But how do you know what to do?
What was on bullet three on yesterday's slide, or the next on the last slide? Bullet three, you know, goals met a lot.
And I think you've given us some.
You offered that up.
I feel like I heard that, I guess.
What this does is what we're doing is really keeping you here and then we will take this. It's manageable enough. You know, if you look at the last list, it looks like this. This is manageable enough that we can take this. And I think in fairly short order, dig into it, this will be the work that this group is going to be engaging in in the next few weeks in terms of how to do this. Obviously, we'll bring in strategic integration into this. We'll build that onto this so that we will report to you, but you will also have the ability to go in on your own.
Can we talk about this going forward as our work plan, not the council work plan?
A long one.
It always bothered me a little bit that that you didn't own our work plan, not you, the staff that messes up our own work plan. It shouldn't be our work plan, it's the council's. It should be something which we all working together and there's a kind of like.
I agree. I think I think this is a little bit, this was a different process where it was a collective give and take as we were moving through this, which this is our work.
Okay, so I'm recognizing that it is five until three and I know that everybody needs to head off at three. Do you want to operate any ordinances before you go? And then we'll take a break and stay with you a moment. Well, then a lightning round it is. Are you ready? Okay. What ordinances would you like to review? Recognizing everything you heard today about workload and priorities and everything you just laid out there for us, what would you like to review?
So I've got one that doesn't have to be immediate, but maybe has eighteen months to be worked out. And that is section fourteen point three, two point oh four oh residential self-generation rate.
I only got fourteen point three.
What?
Fourteen point.
Fourteen point three, two dot oh four oh.
Okay.
Residential self-generation rate. It can allow two hundred percent of last year's consumption and fix the problem where if you don't have access to that, you can't give or enter at all. And it needs to be tied into some incentives for either solar point, solar plus battery or other electrification incentives. And it needs to be tied to the capacity of the neighborhood. So, you know, just just like you can only have so many short-term rentals in an area. Or I don't know if we ended up implementing that or not, but we discussed it pretty hard. But similarly, it needs to be kind of a first come, first served situation to tie it to the capacity of a grid in the neighborhood. Or the consumer can pay for the upgrade if the consumer can. We have consumers who have already done that, paid for upgrade and service to their house. And I'm not trying to dictate all of that. I'm just saying, all this stuff has to be in it. We aren't really know what what needs to be there for about eighteen months. And so I thought it doesn't have to happen that fast.
I heard you mentioned the little storage.
Yeah, I said storage, yeah. I said integrate solar plus battery or electrification plus solar.
Right here, David, storage.
Storage in another column because it tied to the capacity.
Yeah.
Sort of separate.
Right, yeah. We don't want to legislate getting in the trouble.
Okay, what else? This is a lightning round.
I'm not going to give you code numbers, but whatever whatever we have need to address in code to address the missing middle, the bundle of missing middle, maybe I should say the bundle of co-changes to address the missing middle housing stock. And we've talked about before, we just didn't get direction in is a reflection of what we heard in security. That would be one. Secondly, it's, I think we ought to, we ought to not to ignore what anymore, that we ought to get back. I don't know if it's the S T R or the S, the short-term rental ordinance to refocus on that and what we are allowing or not and the reasons why.
S T Rs for A D Us.
Well, I don't know. I don't.
It's used in S T Rs because it's it's actually safer if the tenant is right here on site.
That's true.
Yeah.
I don't mean to argue.
Let's don't talk about that.
And I had a conversation with Harold, so you kind of, you kind of knows.
Pardon?
We had a conversation about this, you know, what you were going to bring back. At least give to me.
Yeah, so the question was, Susie had been hearing the A D U conversations and if it was part of a a strategy that communities are using to to build a more affordable housing. And my answer was yes, if you look nationally, that is one of the strategies that they talk about. And we have information on that. We can send it to all the councils.
That's probably what we've been hearing as well.
Can you put parentheses there of Governor Polis's new zoning policy? So by right, I think that's what he's calling it. Because I think that addresses A D Us and I would like, before we go into this, someone to know what makes it through the legislature.
Exactly.
What about some things that we've heard from folks that have talked to us before, councils send us emails to Strider's Point sixteen years ago, talking about how we need to have some sort of transportation grid system. Something that Joyce's staff talks about that, whether we do it ourselves or whether we create R D D individually.
Okay.
Since we are, which we should, address HUGS. A D U, A D Us, we also should address lands.
Yeah.
Marijuana.
I don't know what that even says. I don't do that to play.
Enemies hospitality.
Yeah, enemies hospitality.
License?
Yes, license.
Okay.
Yeah.
House bill.
Sandy, can we say, no, remove, say, local transit, local motorized transit or or microtransit or something? Because grid is prescriptive, grid may not be the solution.
Eight, I mean, micro, microtransit.
Or get filtered.
Yeah, because because. Is that okay?
That's.
That's right, responding behind you, so.
Did we ever resolve, I don't think we have, resolve conflicts between the inclusionary housing ordinance that we adopted and what is in in our land use codes? Where, I can go back to my files and dig out the conflicts. I don't think they have ever been resolved, but maybe, maybe ended something. There was, I think there were to some degree tied into the eleven inclusionary housing issues we were going to deal with once upon a time. We go, nine of them, I think two of them are.
To that point, Sandy, of Governor Polis's new zoning policy, that should be land use policy since that's what it is. High good. Governor Polis's land use policy. There you go. Because it does address the inclusionary housing and what we need. So that ties it there. What else?
So we had a conversation a while back with water staff about how we meter, you know, really, similarly, the irrigation of green areas around subdivisions that are on arterials. I know that's one I've gotten from staff to look at modern item.
Jim, can we expand on a little bit if you say, looking at our, what is it, our?
There's free tabs, but there's free water for arterial tabs, right? That section of the code and then that ties probably to several landscaping standards.
Yeah, landscaping standards. Can we, can we all in with landscaping standards in alignment with our sustainability plan? If we can expand up, because that's what we've been talking about, that landscaping standards, free water cap, sustainability plan, sub ten. We're kind of moving in different places so people think that a little. And that's one that actually look at ours, we're actually just talking about it.
Can you, as I was doing the free irrigation, I've always been, what are you about school districts? Are they metered for how they are getting the same as residents or H A's or?
They're, yeah, they're in a total system, they're in a commercial level. The school district does have raw, their own raw water. And so they use that in a different way because that's their ownership.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so when I was in attorney with Valerie, it was a couple of weeks ago, Harold, we were talking about how we're using Nextlight with cameras and parks and stuff like that. Is there anything that we are in a position that would get us in trouble in regards to filming people and stuff like that in public places? And just making sure that that's not something we should press down so that we state that, keep it.
We have a data governance team that does work on what that privacy looks like. And so we do have a data governance agreement for the cameras and what that looks like and that and through.
So if you watch the daylight show last night, it was actually on Longmont. They were utilizing private cameras. And so between that, when you're in a public space, even with private cameras. Okay, different question.
It's a good question.
Yeah, just want to know what that's going to be.
We talked about sub ten and according to that, in twenty-four hour amenities in parks, I'm sorry, twelve months out of the year, when it's in parks, you prevent a lot of crime just by letting people use the restroom in the winter. Especially if it's a sub ten design. Is that?
It's not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance?
Or operational.
Or operational, but it did go to the sub ten training and they are bringing back for accommodations.
Excellent, okay. Any other ordinances?
How about, think of all talking about expand.
That's, that's an ordinance?
Well, I'm just, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out how to, how to. I'm just looking like, you know.
Any other ordinances that you feel would be, except for modern items?
Oh, did you?
I like to think of all too.
Because we did get a lot of buy-in for building the kind of neighborhoods that will demonstrate a new style of living that we want to promote. And also because the model of of gathering people in in big office buildings has kind of collapsed. They need to, you know, be more excused than they are. Four point ten point oh one oh, eliminate the fifty percent requirement in sub item eight in favor of some percentage that's lower, like five to ten percent. Because office intensive districts don't exist anymore, but we do need intensive readings to use neighborhoods.
Four point ten?
Yeah, four point ten point oh one oh.
Eliminate the percentage of what?
There's a, there's a fifty percent requirement for fifty percent, no more than fifty percent residential in these mixed-use districts.
Okay.
So only codes fifteen.
Pardon?
Only codes fifteen.
We're talking about, I was trying not to say, we're talking about residential metro districts.
Oh, okay. That's exactly what I thought you were talking about, the first, the new percent.
And it's fifty.
Okay.
And our N P is built down, I trust, you're not building that way anymore, not building anything that way.
Is this right then, eliminating the percentage of, no, the fifty percent residential and mixed-use lower to five percent?
Yeah. A study would be needed to figure out what the right threshold is meant. We don't want any, we don't want to do purely residential stuff, but figure out what the right mixed-use area should be.
If you could figure out the right.
Yeah, you know, there are things like putting in ground source heat exchange subsystems that would need to be special, need special financing. So it's an important justification for that.
Join once?
We're gonna add, we can add, and this is probably pretty important, our economic development ordinances.
What could they be?
Yeah. We just have one.
Yeah, we just have everything in four point like seven two through four point seven nine. Eugene and Jim Gold and I have been talking about the necessity, Eugene referred to as a Frankenstein section. So we'd like to make sure that's really addressing how we want to bring those incentives forward to council. And Jessica, we had started that like before COVID and so it's been on our minds.
And I should mention that your council tactic was a table of other ordinances that we had planned to grant. So there were some for public safety, there were some for health.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all about different public safety and electric roads in various.
So will they just be coming back to us during those quarters?
You know, those kinds of ordinance changes definitely bring back those operational spaces. Yeah. We just wanted to get your brain started because she had.
And to be clear with you also, obviously, we talked about core services, we talked about what your goals are, and then we talked about this. And so the decision-making process is going to be core ordinances related to core services. Your goals, ordinances related to that, and then those that are tangential based on earth that are not, where there's not a direct connection, we will work within our capacity. So some of these are related to housing, so obviously that will slide in there. But some of them that aren't directly touching one of your primary goals, that may have to wait a little bit.
So back to, just real quick, when you said somebody is related to housing, can we view any ordinances regarding subsandar housing? The residential that's housing.
Yeah, you seem good. R D D is good?
Yes.
Yeah, I have, it was at the bottom of my list because I couldn't find the ordinances. Our habitability ordinances are like, it can't be fewer than this many square feet and it can't, the building, the ceiling's out, it uses this tall. The state habitability for a dwelling unit are really weak, you know, like enough to have a toilet and two sinks or something. But we can strengthen our habitability ordinances quickly on.
Currently, so currently we're adopting the property maintenance code that's part of the family by C C codes, the international codes, right? That's what we adopt, that's what Jane and Alexandria inspected and worked through. So I think Glenn and I can talk to them and take a look at that.
Okay, because what we have now is really weak. You can barely live in it. No, no air conditioning, no hot water or anything. I mean, it's beautiful.
Okay. Am I wrong?
I don't know. We can look, we have to have running water.
Yeah, we have to have running water, but not necessarily without it.
All right. Now go on once. Go on twice. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break to let everyone who is here from the public that has not signed up for public invite to hear. Feel free to do so. Everybody ready?
Yes.
All right, Ruby, you have the floor.
Okay. My name is Ruby Lopez, fifteen twelve of Andrade, Longmont. It what drives north on Highway one fifty-nine from the town of San Luis, in the San Luis Valley, where you'll see an imposing mountain, Walker Peak. This mountain, or syndicini, is one of the four primary sacred mountains of the Navajo people or the dead. It represents the eastern boundary of the Navajo traditional lands and a part of our heritage stories. It is important to me to hide it in the desert. Just north of Longmont, near the town of Creston, the peak of the San Luis Piso, named after Kit Carson. Kit Carson was an American soldier who implemented a scorched earth campaign against the Navajo people. He was responsible for carrying out the federal government's plan of rounding up the people and making them walk hundreds of miles and making them walk hundreds of miles from northern Arizona to an internment camp at Bosque, Redondo, in eastern New Mexico. It's known as the Longmont. The Navajo people suffered immensely, just like the Arapaho and Cheyenne people suffered at San Creek. It's an abomination that a keep honoring Kit Carson, a murderer, is near a Navajo sacred mountain. It's an abomination that a street in Longmont is named after John Evans, the one who stoked the fires that brought about the San Creek massacre. The city prides itself as a pageant sister city of the northern Arapaho of Blue River. Please honor that relationship by removing John Evans' name from Longmont forever. And I appreciate Councilmember McCoy reading this issue to our attention. Thank you.
Mike Schatzheier?
Hey there, I'm Mike Schatzheier of sixty-nine Over Road, and I don't have a prepared statement, I've got a few notes. At first, just like to let everyone know how incredibly thrilled I am at what transpired here today. Fifteen years ago, when I first spoke to city council, I addressed them in the council chambers about the imminent threat of a hundred-year flood point, or flood event, that could cause three hundred million dollars of damage, how the threat of this was exacerbated by climate change, and how if they were proactive, they could build a vision for the river for we were as an economic engine for the city and a vital cultural and social heart of the city, going back to the original reason that Chicago, how they came here, way back when. So to see the change over these years, of course, we have a flood event that helped accelerate things, you know, for good or for bad, but to see the change. I'd just really like to acknowledge and applaud the city council for everything they've done, for the citizens, for the staff, for the incredible change and the difference between night and day that I've seen over the past fifteen years, and the courage it took of this community, the citizens and particularly the staff, to make that change happen. So I'd just like to acknowledge and really applaud that. It's just night and day, that's incredible. I would like to add some things to the conversation that I did not see brought into here today. And again, I didn't prepare a statement, I just jot down some things, but I would like to see more conversation around the issue of systems thinking, because the issues we're talking about here are complex and they're all intertwined. It's what I would refer to probably now as the poly crisis. The intertwining of wicked systems like climate change, sustainability, environmentalism, housing, equity. And a couple of things that were not mentioned, the digital revolution and the threat of economic downfall if we don't be proactive around the threat of digital revolution and the impact it could have on the jobs and the economy. I'd like to, so a way to address systems thinking a little more digestible is the phrase multi-solving. If we can build more walkable, bikeable communities where you don't have to own a car and you meet the basic human need of being able to live without being forced to own a car, you help address issues like budgetary issues that allow monies for health and education and all these issues we're talking about. Just quickly, equity, intergenerational equity. We have a moral obligation to provide a liberal planet. We have, oof. My generation, as a moral obligation, provide a liberal planet and a flourishing future for the next generations and the unborn. And we need to go into the conversation around equity. Lastly, housing is a bill that we need to talk about, construction defects law, municipal code, code and public wealth funds.
Thank you. Thank you. I love your passion. Uh, this was Strider, try to move. You can stay here, Strider.
Oh, okay. Oh, thanks. Yeah, the street name thinks some of you were here and remember when we came Chittington Drive. One of our members was Ernie Greenland. His grandfather settled in Burlington in eighteen fifty-nine. And Chittington's people came through and he was out plow and then they said, you're coming with us, you're gonna be one of them. Said, no, no, I'm not here. They put a gun to his head and said, yep, you're coming, get on my horse. That's how they recruited some of the people to engage in San Creek massacre. And once we, we lost in city council, some of you know who the council was then. And then we got approval to have a plaque explaining who Chittington was. And then the city council, who had wrote it us down, then they said, okay, we'll change the name because they didn't want the history known. And history, I mean, they're giving me nice awards here in Longmont, but they prevented me from speaking for the last couple of years. Jim Jordan, a black lady poet, wrote a book, said, some of us did not die, some of us are still here. I talked to Bernard Lafayette two days ago. He was the first SNCC organizer to go into Selva in nineteen sixty-three. We had a good talk and he said, I'm gonna take Selva and put it on the map of the world. And, and we did. I was, I led the internal security force for the March on Montgomery. marched all day and led security all night. And I would like to have a chance to speak someday. But anyway, part of it, digital, Next Life, I own my trailer, but I have to rent the land. And they prevent us, violate us from getting Next Life. We're not allowed to have it because they bribed the, they, they half a million dollars in two elections. They won the first election. Two years later, we defeated them. Everybody else got Next Life, but not us. We paid eighty times more per service because other than a trailer. And they're bribing, uh, DirecTV and Comcast for bribing the regional landlord, I don't know how much money, but it's big. They lied to us, they said the contract ran out in January and we should get it. No, no, I changed my mind, I decided, no, they'll steal it for a few more years. And we, we paid twice as much money for one forty of the service. So everybody else gets eighty times more of internet service than we do because we live in a trailer.
Thank you, sir.
A lot of other things, thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Ethan? I don't see Ethan, if he comes in, welcome.
Mayor, members of council and city staff, I want to thank you again for a little bit more of your time. Promise I won't stop you today. I said it yesterday, I'm gonna say it again, and I will probably say it again tomorrow. The price of housing is too damn high. This is a choice that we collectively make. We make it every day through decisions and actions, big and small. With permitting offices for homeowners wanting to do some work themselves. How the council responds to residents who have opinions about the built environment. Rules we put on the books, we're allowed to stay on the books, about what can be good. Those choices all have rationale to them, sometimes good and sometimes bad. But the most important thing we can do in order to bring down the cost of housing is to examine those choices and revisit the ones that could be improved. There is broad public support from a diverse group for reexamining those choices and making better ones. Some of us are here today, but I promise you there are many, many more of us. I say this as someone who's part of a generation filled with anxiety about what the future holds for us and who desperately want to set down roots in a community that we can afford to live in. I also say that as someone who deeply loves the city and wants it to be the best version of itself that it can be, both for those people who made it what it is today, but also for the people who are going to live here a hundred years. I want to thank everyone on the road for their commitment this year for revisiting these choices on the land development code, the transportation code, and a number of other areas, and for the commitment to turn the corner on the cost of housing. It's gonna be very exciting to work and do this year to make the city the best version for me.
Thank you, Shikiu. Trish Alwood?
Good afternoon. My name is Trish Alwood. I don't want to interfere with this, but I just wanted to really drive home two points that are important to me. One of them is the pedestrian-friendly nature of Longmont as well as housing. First of all, I know that with the visions you're laying, some of them are very informative to council. And first I want to thank you and the engineering department for installing the crosswalk, lighted crosswalk at Mountain View and Deerwood. However, as a blind person, I have to travel infinitely on my own, so I'm aware of all of the hazards, even in downtown. There are many, many intersections where there's no, no paint, no signs, nothing, and people just tear through there. So every day I go downtown, I feel like I'm taking my life into my own hands. And I just, I really have a vision for Longmont as a pedestrian-first community. And so I just really want to drive home the importance of that, because it isn't just good for me, it's good for anyone. So any particular I found helpful, the flashing ones, because they're up at a, at a viewpoint where the drivers can see. So that's what I wanted to say. For second of all, housing, Longmont has a thriving musician and artist community, and it breaks my heart that it's so difficult for people who are the creative lifeblood of this community to not be able to afford housing. So I would just want to encourage you to look at any ordinances, land use plans, something that will provide creative solutions to make housing affordable for, for everyone, which is really a basic key, right? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trish. Josie?
Me? Hi, everyone. I am also concerned about housing and I think imposing a vacant use act would benefit Longmont and from the revenue generated from it. We would be able to build even more high-density housing. I was doing research on this and some of making the median income in the local county, which is about thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, is not able to afford to rent even the cheapest studio apartment here because they require you to make five thousand dollars a board than the median income to even consider a rental there. I also saw that they added this morning, have forty-five vacant use in the studio apartments, which is something like eleven percent of their total units, which is kind of unacceptable, like that's not the price being set by the market. If it was, those would be built. And there's not these empty vacancies. But that's my thing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Steve?
Steph.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, hello, city council. I appreciate so much the progress the city has made to pass over years and improving viability. But as someone who writes her back around town as a primary need, means of transport, I feel like there's still some work to be done. Sometimes, like when I was getting downtown by a third and taking the bike lane, the bike lane would probably stop and stuff at sunset. Third and sunset's also a pretty scary intersection for cyclists for other reasons. People who cannot or do not want to drive a car shouldn't be treated as a second-class citizens. And I shouldn't feel punished for doing the right thing of not contributing in underpart of traffic. So I, I appreciate the focus on multi-mobility and multi-modal transport and walkability. More housing options and walking distance to business, groceries and cultural amenities would contribute a lot. Please make walking and biking a first-class experience in Longmont.
Audrey.
Thank you, councilmembers, city staff, mayor. I think we need to start building more affordable, sustainable housing, that is also multi-generational, here in Longmont. Several years ago, I was traveling from Oregon, an ex-tenant George, who was from Greece. We fell into a conversation and he was telling me about his house there. It's a multi-generational three-story house. It's been in his family for over a hundred years. George's parents lived on the first floor, George and his wife lived on the second floor. And his adult daughter and her small family lived on the third, final floor. When George's parents passed, as generations did before them, everyone lived in Florida. This was a great way to settle for them, because the older generation could age in place with family members nearby to take care of them. The younger generation benefited from wisdom and the experience of their older family members. It's better for the environment, it uses a much smaller footprint than a single family home, and it helps to create generational wealth. We need to start building affordable and sustainable housing in Longmont, and some of it needs to be multi-generational. Multi-generational, all of it needs to be walkable and bicycle-friendly, with greater public transportation options. Thank you.
Thanks, Audrey. Paul Patterson?
I'm Paul Patterson. I believe that we need to build more housing in Longmont. In order to achieve this, zoning laws should be liberalized to allow for more construction, apartment buildings, multiplexes and townhouses in the city. Minimum parking in apartments should also be reduced or eliminated entirely. Population Colorado over by was fifteen percent over the last census period. Every city in the state has an obligation to grow their housing stocks to accommodate our new neighbors. If we fail to do this, Colorado will look more and more like California, where homeowners completely outreach for vast swaths of the population and low-income people are displaced with their homes and even their state by the thousands. If we act decisively, however, we can ensure that Longmont remains a stable and welcoming community for people all that know about us.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Taylor Richland, who hasn't leave, but he gave his statement to Santa Seder from La Riva.
Hey, now I'm Taylor Richland. Hey, Taylor, no. Thirty-four short place. I came here to encourage zero reform by encouraging mixed use in all existing neighborhoods. This can help increase density, be a benefit to the city finances and increase social cohesion by providing a third place within every neighborhood. Density mixed-use style neighborhoods increases walkability, reduces traffic congestion, ultimately decreases our impact on the environment, reducing emissions and preserving airspace. Let us realize a city that is an organic living organism. And contrary to the envision Longmont saving places of stability, every neighborhood observes the ability, deserves the ability to have space and necessities within walking distance. Whether a home becomes a doctor's office, small furniture cafe bar, to be a gathering space. Get the neighborhood dream, get, let the neighborhood dream what they can to enhance our, our living and livelihood. Reform zoning setbacks, lock conversion sizes, encourage park maximums, allow lock conversions to densify, to densify existing neighborhoods while encouraging indoor development and missing.
Thank you, Taylor. So I think all of those comments actually put a final okay on what we've been doing for the past two days, because that's exactly what we've been addressing. So we're gonna wrap this up. Carol's gonna wrap it up for us with what he heard today. And then we'll do a real quick evaluation, what worked for folks and what they would change for the next.
So I think it is a good wrap-up, what we heard. When we started with, how do we look at our goals in the council and the staff collectively? And what it was like?
Carol, I don't know what that is and I can't get it to stop. Stop, stop it. Is it escape? Right. I was just trying to get full screen.
So as we were working through this, yeah, yesterday, we spent a lot of time talking about what we were dealing with internally as staff, and we talked about the importance of core services. And then you all, as we started moving through the discussion, said, you know, equity, sustainability and safety are things that we have to incorporate within the DNA of the organization. And so for me, Valerie's putting this together in real time as we were going, that's the foundation of the house. And in your houses, all this is strong, it's your foundation. And then you all added the walls of housing for all, early childhood, care and education and transportation. And then we had steam there that you talked about, which really is that last piece of the puzzle, which is the root. And so, and overriding all of this is how we're working in climate action and what we're doing. So this was our visual representation of what you all talked about. And I wanted to just affirm that what you all have said. And I wanted to just affirm that what you all were saying, is this what you all were saying? And I'm not gonna go over the details that you have, you just finished this, but this is the agreement that we're coming to as a collective to say, this is what we're gonna work on over the next year.
What's your wager?
I like the visual there.
That's a good word. It's easy.
It's great having all these folks. You see us all chatting and voting. We're reacting to what you are saying and building different components of.
Real time, as you would say.
Real time. I mean, it's real time. So, I just wanna say thanks to you, thanks to all the staff that have been here for two days. I will say in my twenty-plus years of this profession and going through it, this is probably the first time that it really has been, for me, a goal-setting session where it's, it's really just a life of working for this. And I want to, I want to thank you for your understanding of the core services and the challenges that we're facing in today's world, and the staff and what we're doing. I think we have a really, you have, highlighting our future with.
Very cheesy. I really like this.
Yeah. Which for us, what that does is it gives us something manageable that we can wrap our arms around, and we can really start driving forward through the pace. And I just think as we continue to move forward, as things are coming forward, my comment is, as things come forward from a staff perspective, if it's not in this arena, I will be managing that. As we see things come forward that could distract us from this, I think we have to collectively manage that, because we can very quickly spin out and not be able to focus like we need to on this.
So can we take that graphic and blow it up and post it in the council chambers? So every time a squirrel comes along, or whatever, disruptor, we can say, where does, how does it contribute to building out this house, supporting it, or, you know, growing our impact on, or reducing our impact on climate change?
So I was gonna also ask, where, where will this PowerPoint and information be? Will we present it to the general public at some point?
That's a great question. So first off, Mariken has already changed your vision statements on the city council webpage. Oh, wow. So those are already in place right now. I believe the next step is for Harold to bring back a more complete goal and metric document back out to you all. All of these materials, we could certainly post back up. Is that correct, Don? Could we add them to something?
Sorry, I don't.
That all these materials, could we add them to something? I would recommend.
They go into the, they go into the, they go into the, I don't know.
Except the giant poster that we'll, that we will make sure that we put into the.
Eric is saying you all, my presentation, just if you're ever asked, you can see sort of how we worked through Friday's conversation, because I think that's important information for you all. So that when people are asking you to do things, you can always refer to that, so here's what's going on.
I understand that it's gonna go into the, the, guys, but I think for maybe even a couple of weeks, it would be harmful to have on some sort of link in there, just because then people can access it and become a discussion point, they come up and talk to us, council, and that. The ease of finding it is always valuable.
Certainly one of the things that I think I heard was communication stuff for you all to have. That you can either hand out to residents, or that you can have in your back pocket that really remind you of today, which we'll certainly work on that as well.
And that's a reformatting with us internally, so I've already talked to. This is shifting our communication plan as we're, as we're looking at this and what you want.
So Harold, really good, but I want you to continue that. When you have to pivot from any of our pillars, or please let us know so that we can also help that to our residents then. Certainly the brand of ordering, for these reasons.
And I think having, you know, we called them disruptors.
Yeah.
I think having a conversation on, real, you know, again, as disruptors are occurring, we're having that conversation to say, here's this disruptor, here's what's happening.
I think, you know, certainly what I'm recognizing is that we didn't provide particularly great, you know, hey, here's what's happening each of these months accordingly, or some sort of reporting so that you can follow along, really better than that. Who's going back to the, uh, center? Eventually. Did you take this to Stephanie? She said she wanted a donut. I would be happy to take that. Thank you, Steph, yes. Marshall?
Well, this is such a great visual. If steam is kind of a cohort at this point, if, if we change that to public amenities or even the third place, wish it was posted all around the city. You know, it's not just inside of the council.
We'll kick this to our communications group, so they can work with the graphics. This was, again, Valerie moving fast.
I can already get that house. I hope we do. I hope somebody else does. I made it steam so that it makes sense to get it. Excellent. Okay, so retreat evaluation. So you're at the end. What are things that worked well and things that you would like to see different for next?
The only thing that I can see is this, this room is absolutely great. But in my classroom, I have this little microphone that goes around my neck in a line here. So I don't have to speak up, and it's really, really handy, because I just can click it on, click it off, and that sort of thing. And so now I don't have a teacher voice anymore, like some may have, because of the fact that I don't have to have that. And this is, this, that would be so useful for this room in the first place, and, and everything. And then they have a microphone, and it's a, it's a outfit that does this. See, when I get back to my classroom, I'd find if I consider, and I think it's really sick.
Yeah, thank you. It's good, it's just one of the probably five things.
I'd say you were, you were well-prepared. You, you did a nice job of getting ready. Say, I don't know if ever I've said this before, I don't know if I've ever been in sessions like this that are any better or facilitator than what you do, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that you two teamed up to adjust and adapt in real time as the conversation unfolded. And then all the presentations from the staff, but there was a lot left.
Tracy, food was great.
Yeah.
Food was great.
Yeah.
Food was.
Food was great. I would like to start to give round of applause for Erica. Erica's first retreat, and I think she nailed it.
And she was managing me in the process.
Yeah, right. What else? Peter Sider.
I thought that we, as a council, interacted with staff very well with each other, and I think this was probably pretty psychonic to the best.
Kudos to staff, yeah, great. And to you.
To you all.
Yep, you all. The work you did in the salad, not a single word.
I don't know about anyone else, but I did like it two days.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
This was, this was a really good pace. And, um.
I didn't go, I'm not gonna go home today thinking, oh, I wish I would've said that, or, oh, we didn't address this issue.
Any feedback?
Everybody around the table, I wish we could have a bigger table, because we had a lot of people in the back that, you know, were really contributing every, every break. I was like stopping by to see someone. So if there's something to do more of that in the future, a bigger, rounder table, because having you guys across facing us was great.
I think you're no joke.
Do you agree with my comments?
Yeah.
I don't hear any issues.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, but you're working hard.
All right. Well, then, mayor, I think you're ready to adjourn. I don't even need you to vote. Great, good. Thanks, you all.